Okay. Thank you. All righty. We'll go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session of Thursday, October 10, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the Assembly Chambers. First, for everyone's information, we have one Assembly member, Steve Ames, who's online there tonight. First item we have is Citizens Comments. The toll-free number is 907-486-3231, and the toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to speak in person or call in, please do so at this time. Ask you to sign in and make sure the mic is on and address comments to the body as a whole. And if you're calling in, please turn off your listening device to make sure we don't get the feedback. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Assembly. My name is Casey Docterman, and I'm here again to speak about Kodiak Island Borough Regulation Code 10.10.010, which references junk or abandoned vehicles. There is a member of this Assembly that brings this issue to my attention by abandoning their junk on my family's private property. Item C of this regulation states it is unlawful for a person without the consent of the property owner or person in possession or control of the property to store or abandon junk or a vehicle on said property. End quote. While this regulation identifies that such an action is unlawful, it appears that there is no enforcement mechanism that exists for this regulation. I am again making a request to the Assembly that this code is revised to include an enforcement mechanism for such violations. In our current situation, the letter of the law is currently not in our favor. Spirit of the law regardless should demonstrate clear response and swift action, protect citizens such as myself. Again, I implore this Assembly to adopt an enforcement mechanism for such cases as ours. I have emailed a copy through the clerk of estimates of cost for removal. I also have copies I can leave with you tonight. The estimate just to move the item to the junkyard in Bell Flats is over $33,000. The estimate to cut it in place and recycle the parts is over $42,000. Hopefully, this Assembly can understand and address the gravity of my family's situation as well as those of others in this community. In the meantime, I hope the person responsible for this injustice steps up and takes responsibility for their actions and removes this machinery from our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Nova, are there any phone calls? Thank you.
I came to talk to you tonight about affordable housing and perhaps-
Carly, would you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Carlene McChesney.
Thank you.
And perhaps you heard on the news Monday morning, the 6:00 AM news and then the 10:00 AM news, and then I wasn't home for the rest of the day. But what they were talking about is that the low-cost housing is going to go away. And because they have a period of 30 years, because they got a federal income low-cost housing tax credits, so after 30 years, they can be just rented out as normal housing. So the rent will increase and people will be evicted. So I've asked so many people, but nobody can give me an answer why the low-cost housing had, perhaps they still do, 108 empty apartments, and then they were remodeling these. And so I'm trying to put two and two together, and eventually, you know, the things will come to light. So I just kind of wanted to let you know about that, what's coming in the future, and/or maybe it's not going to happen in Kodiak, but who knows? So thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens Comments, please do so?
Good evening, Assembly. Earlier, I dropped off some, a little, I think, four pages of documents. So I dropped these off because I didn't know, you know, you look a lot at the amendments, and there's a lot of redlining and blacklining. And when I went to look at this, there was a section that wasn't in there in the packet you received, which was Section 6.01, no, the second page that I gave you, which talks about dumpster options. But I wanted you to be able to see side by side what it looks like next to the amendment. You've been told a lot that this is ambiguous and unclear, and so I just wanted to make sure that you had those sections for yourself. So these are the main parts of the contract that the amendments address. One is the mandatory services, and then two is that options for dumpsters. Those are two of the big parts of the amendment. 6.01 says the contractors required to charge the owner or occupant of a premises. That was kind of the issue when Alaska Waste had asked for premise verbiage to align with customer because they were charging occupants, and then they couldn't take them to court, or in our case, they violated the Privacy Act and shared our bill and took someone else to court, the person we were buying the building from. So also, addressing this, the Contract Committee stated very strongly, and it still has not come to you, the Assembly, that only the owner can be the customer. And this other verbiage keeps coming to you, that an occupant of a unit can be charged, they can be an account holder. But that was not what was stated from the committee. So I'm a little disappointed in that, that you keep not getting. Staff has also brought forward, in 6.0B, it addresses self-haul staff. I saw a document where they were summing up their changes, and they said there was no definition for self-haul. You'll see that 601B of the current contract, in fact, does have a definition for self-haul, and that gets explained. Units. Just really quickly, there's been discussion about whether or not this will cost more. I just did a brief little, I'm going to call it, Building A has a four-yard dumpster. Once a week, it's picked up for $635. Under the unit change, its bill will be, and each unit will get charged, its bill for the month will be $1,536. Building B has a 5.5-yard dumpster. They get paid, they pay $799.
Go ahead and finish up, Coral.
Under this new contract, when they switch to units, and they might have more than 23 units, but at 23 units, their bill will be $1,104. There's many buildings like that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any calls, Nova? None? Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens Comments, please come forward at this time.
Thanks for allowing me a minute to speak. My name is Dan Rohr. I wanted to speak in regards to the garbage contract. I want to start out my comments by just saying, Alaska Waste has been doing a great job of executing this contract, so I don't want any of my statements in any way, shape, or form reflect poorly on that. They have certainly gone above and beyond for me with a couple of different properties of mine with issues I've had to deal with. I'm concerned with some language change in the contract, specifically this desire to use the word "unit" instead of differentiating between commercial residential and multifamily residential. And I realize that there's some challenges with the other language, but the challenge with the unit language is really, really difficult. And so I want to read you one section out of what's in front of you tonight. And I've seen multiple flyers that would insinuate that this is not the way it's going to be handled, but the problem is I can't find that language in the contract itself. And so let me read to you, and then I'll explain to you what my concern is. So "unit." "Unit" means a whole building or any portion of a building which is designed for separate occupancy for commercial or residential purposes which generates solid waste. Units in a single structure with separate entrances and separated by a common wall are considered units regardless of whether they have separate addresses for other utility services. So I'm going to use a ludicrous example to start out with. I have 225 storage units. They all have separate entrances. Many of them do generate waste, and by this definition, I mean, I mean, again, I'm being ridiculous. Obviously, we're not going to charge 225 residents from their storage units $50 bucks apiece. I mean, that would be crazy, but that's what this language talks about. Then, think about the subway building. There's 20-some-odd units. I actually don't know how many units are in there. Right now, we're comfortably serviced, Alaska Waste and I agree, comfortably serviced off a five-and-a-half-yard dumpster dumped weekly. But this, again, would then say I'd have to go to a unit measurement, which, again, doesn't make sense when we've all worked together with Alaska Waste to come up with a dumpster size that is practical, reasonable, and acceptable. Plus, I don't think Alaska Waste would want to build 20 separate units, individuals. Anyways, I've seen a flyer that said, okay, one to three are handled a certain way, four units and above, then shift over to this other scenario, but I can't find it in the contract. And so anyways, I just am concerned that the unit language is inadequate when dealing with commercial structures. I wonder if you're better off to use the word dwelling unit and then allow commercial, anyways. It's just difficult. You guys have been looking at this for months and months and months. I can't come up with language changes in three minutes' worth of comments, but I do wonder if dwelling unit would fix some of the concerns, but it doesn't really address the commercial ones. So anyways, if, dealing with the four units that were referenced in your flyer that you guys saw on October 3, I believe it was, if that were in the contract, it would fix the problem, but I can't find it in the contract. Again, it's 202 pages, so it could be there somewhere. I may have missed it, and I apologize. I have to run to another meeting, but I will listen online because I'm curious to see if you guys get some additional information about that. So anyways, it's a hard job. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Dan.
David Edwards with Alaska Waste. I just wanted to let you guys know, I appreciate all the work that's been put into the amendment and the code change, and then just look forward to hearing the discussion tonight, and I'm here if any questions come up.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens Comments, please come forward at this time or call in, because we're going to go ahead, and we have no calls. So we'll go ahead and move on to agenda items. First item is discussion of contract number FY 2019-25B, Amendment Number Two, Residential and Commercial Solid Waste Collection and Recycling Services. Staff report, Amy, and I guess one of the things too is, as we heard in the previous meeting there last week, under Citizens Comments, there were comments made regarding rates going up, and can staff expand more on what is actually happening with rates? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So if you haven't heard about this, the Kodiak Island Borough established a solid waste contract committee with Resolution Fiscal Year 2412 to evaluate, develop, and clarify inconsistencies in the current solid waste contract. This committee consisted of Assembly members Turner, Smiley, and Ladue, began meeting in January 2024 and held nine meetings to discuss clarifications and updates needed to ensure that different customer types were being treated fairly when compared to similar customer types. It's important to note that all of these meetings were open to the public and allowed public comment. Two residents attended the meetings, and the rest was just staff and Assembly members. Since the time the First Amendment to this contract was passed, several customer complaints with a range of overfilled containers or inadequate containers to incorrect billing or inconsistent billing have come into the borough. Each of these complaints were considered, and solutions to the issues were developed. Additionally, one of the other main issues that we're going to talk about tonight, I hope, is that we need to talk about the methodology of how our current contract is calculating the customer count. If that part is not clarified in the contract, we could face residential rates going up by 18% and commercial rates going up by 30. So since we're talking about commercial rates, one of the public comments in the public hearing last week dealt with, the residents said that they had seen their solid waste rates go up 300%, and I was like, I know that they haven't, but then we looked and they have, but not in the way that you might think. So in the previous contract, they had a rate that was very similar to our current rate, but they had 81 customers that were on-call customers, and the contract before us allowed bi-weekly pickups. So if you were on a bi-weekly pickup and you were an on-call customer, your rate could be very low. And then when this contract kicked in, when we started this fiscal year 1925 contract, we started in at, hold on, let me look, $313.42. And I made a graph for you so you can see how that went. And over, over the last five years, what those look like. And when, at the end of this graph, you're going to see that for fiscal year 24, the price is going to go from $326.09 to $423.29, and that's because of that customer count if we don't clarify the customer count. If we do clarify the customer count, that amount will actually go down. So here's that handout. So one of the comments that was made was that the First Amendment doubled the price, and the Second Amendment will double it again, and that, those facts just aren't there. But there is something in the first contract that is very noteworthy. When that contract was signed, from the table of contents on, there were a lot of inconsistencies. The table of contents was wrong, the math in the table to how to figure out what the rate was, was wrong. So a lot of that is updated in this Second Amendment. But the page 30 of the original contract had a price chart in it, and the price chart listed a two-yard cubic, or two-cubic yard dumpster at $156.17. If you look at that and then you look at the First Amendment, it's going to look like that doubled. But what happened in that contract back when it first started is that whole first column was a clerical error, and it was ruled that they were not going to use that. That column was in there because they were thinking about doing bi-weekly service, and then they took that out, but they didn't update the chart. So that price was never a price offered in the borough for that whole column, and I have a handout for that, too.
Are these in the back? Thank you.
So on that paper that you have now, the column that's outlined in pink, if you were to look at that and then look at the First Amendment, you would say, this is how much a two-yard dumpster costs at the beginning of the contract, and at the First Amendment, it costs that second line item. But that first column was never actually charged. It's not a rate that actually went into effect in the borough. So when the statements were made, yes, I can absolutely see how they got there. It just, the problem with that statement is that that first line was never actually an actual price that was charged. So that's how we got to that. So I hope that explains how the prices have changed. If the new customer count language passes that's in the Second Amendment, that 2024 rate actually goes down a couple of dollars instead of up.
Repeat that on what the 2024 new rate does. Looking at the two-yard or?
It will go down a couple of dollars. So right now, it's at that $326. Patricia, Jenna, do you know what it will be for, oh, it's on this, isn't it? It's right in front of me.
Another handout?
It is. It will be $319.24.
$319. Go from $326 to $319.24, instead of what's listed here for 24 at $423.29.
Yes. And so what Nova is handing out right now is kind of a solid waste contract timeline through the years, so you can see some of those prices. We started with contract from fiscal year 2010, so you can see what those prices look like back then. And then, as that contract went through, we started our contract fiscal year 21, which is the orange color. And then those are the updates, there's yearly updates with the CPI and PPI, and it shows you what those rates have done across the years.
Any questions of staff at this time? Yeah. So that's part of why I've given that opportunity. Jared?
Just one, to kind of just get the ball rolling here. So what is the, what is the mechanism that brings, we'll just say, the two-yard, what's the mechanism that brings it down, where we see that decrease? Is this the CPI, PPI?
Yes. So it's the, there are several components to the rate. One of them adjusts, and that's the inflation rate. And so if the inflation has gone up, then the price goes up. But we have a couple of mechanisms in there. We only do 75% of the inflation, and it can't change more than 5%. So it's capped at 5%. So if we have a crazier of 12% inflation, and the 75% of that 12 is over 5, it can only move 5%. So there's a clause in there that keeps it from going up and down too much.
But there's something else in there. In order, in order to go from 326 on the two-yard or 326.09 to 423.29, there's something else.
Right. So that's the, that's the customer count. So this year, Alaska Waste decided that they're going to change how they counted our customers. And the reason that's important is because when we figure out rates, the customer is on the bottom, is the dividend. So we take our total waste collected, and it's divided by the number of customers. Normally, and when the contract was bid in the RFP and in the example of how we calculate rates for commercial dumpsters, it says it's, the number of customers is every dumpster in service. This year, Alaska Waste counted it as, so I think the best explanation is if you look at the city of Kodiak and they have six around the harbor, that would be six customers. That would be six different dumpsters, and so the number in the dividend would be six. This year, when they counted for that scenario, the city of Kodiak would be one. So anyone who has multiple dumpsters in their name, in one name, would, so every dumpster the city Kodiak has across the community is one customer, the way that they counted. Normally, it would be, you know, all the individual dumpsters that are, there's one at the ferry terminal, there's one at the transient dock, there's six around the harbor, then there's some in Dog Bay. So they take all of those, and they just count them as one, because it's one customer. But we believe that the way they've done it previously is the correct way, and we'd like to put that in writing to ensure that that's how it's done for the rest of the contract.
Good point. Jared?
And this is where we get into the discussion about the definitions, customer, owner, unit. Do you mind doing a rundown?
Sure. So the owner thing that was mentioned in public comment, she's right. We did talk about that a lot at the solid waste contract committee, but then the lawyer reviewed our work, and then the lawyer put their opinion in. So some of the stuff that we talked about, the solid waste contract, didn't make it out of the solid waste contract committee because the lawyer didn't agree with the assumptions that were made in that committee. So there was stuff that was talked about there that did not make it to the Assembly. So that is an absolutely correct statement, and that's why. What was the other thing I was answering?
Oh, good. If you mind. I'm just going down the definitions, differences, the changes with the customer versus unit versus owner.
I'm going to ask Patricia to come up here and do that, because she is my subject matter expert on those changes. Or Jenna, whoever wants. I know you're both so excited.
It's easier than trying to use the podium. Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Owner, customer, unit, dwelling, tract.
Let me make sure I can look at the original here. Excuse me.
Mainly because, like there was mentioned in public comment, these are laid out in, on the, on the very nice flyer. Were those codified in the contract? Is, I guess, a sub-question.
So I will start with customer. And the definition for customer. I lied. I'm going to start with account holder. Did you want me to read the definition as it is, or do you want me to discuss the changes?
Whatever you would like, to get the detail out. There's people listening, so probably a good idea, I think.
To read it?
Yeah.
Okay. So the definition as listed in Amendment Number Two for account holder means the owner of a premises or the person or entity identified by, by owner as being responsible, as being the responsible party for the unit's payment for the required solid waste collection services available to a residential or commercial customer. When the account holder is a person or entity other than the owner, they may be referred to as the authorized account holder. And so it's kind of a bigger, more holistic view as to how we're going to describe owner, account holder, customer, that kind of thing. So the idea for staff and the committee was that we sort of create a line, a linear connection between the owner, the account holder, and who is considered the customer. And so we included account holder to be able to designate, a main portion of it is to designate people that are renting as a tenant that may not be the owner but is responsible for the bill. Any questions on that one so far?
Continue.
Okay. So now I will go to customer or customer account. Customer or customer account means the person or entity whose name and billing information are associated with the solid waste service being provided at a unit, either residential or- or commercial. See account holder. So the account holder could be someone different. If it's a renter, they could be considered the account holder. And I know we use the word a lot of customer or customer account, and a lot of those words are used interchangeably. And so having a clear definition for both of them was really important.
Ryan, have you got a question at this point?
Yeah. So at the end of your definition of customer account, you referenced see account holder on the line, or on the version that I have, I don't see that tie back to a secondary definition of, which would maybe be line 166, where you tie that back to account holder? I don't see that on here.
I printed this directly from the packet on September 12, I believe, is when I first printed it.
Okay. I'm looking at the packet tonight. And this may just be semantics, but when you have, at least in my opinion, when you have a tieback to a definition that ties to another definition, you stated it correctly, but I don't see it illustrated here as such. So maybe just make a little flag note in there on the version that I see. What does your guys' version say? Did you guys show the tieback?
Point me to it, please.
Line 166, page 6 of 21 in the packet tonight.
Are you looking at the ordinance maybe instead of the contract?
You know, that's exactly what I'm doing. Yep. I'm looking at the ordinance, and the definition that you illustrated from your table of definitions doesn't match the ordinance. So if you just make a little note...
Will do.
That does not tie that back currently as it's listed, that would be great.
Would you like me to continue?
Please do.
Okay. I'll read owner next.
I was just making sure you had... Take your time.
I got it. Owner means each person or entity identified as holding the title or ownership for a premises or unit. The owner is responsible party for the unit's signing up for solid waste services account and maintaining that account in good standing with the contract holder. Owners of multiple premises or multiple units will have more than one account.
Any questions, if anyone? Continue.
So this, this definition just shows that the owner is responsible for their premise still, but they're responsible for making sure that they are signed up for the account and maintaining account in good standing, whether they have a tenant or not. So that was the, that was the reasoning behind that. Are there any other definitions that you would like to, for me to go over?
Unit.
Unit. Unit means a whole building or a portion of a building which is designed for separate occupancy for commercial or residential purposes, which generates solid waste. Units in a single structure with separate entrances and separated by a common wall are considered units regardless whether they have a separate address, addresses for other utility services. We added the unit definition to help identify the separation of a premises and what individual spaces are responsible for obtaining and maintaining their own solid waste disposal services.
Steve, if you have any questions or that, please interject, because I can't see you. So just holler at us. Thank you. Jared?
I think, can you go over these service options that are on this flyer? And where, where we can find... Because I, I searched the document for service options and didn't find it, or... But, yeah, where does, where does the bottom half of this flyer in regards to units come from? First, what does it mean? And then, how did we get there?
So I'll look at this a little bit holistically from, in the section number six. That is a heavily edited section where we added more, I guess, staff added more clarity for the types of service. And so for roll carts, dumpsters, self-haul, and what goes along with each of those types of services, or what would be allowed or disallowed. When we were first discussing the solid waste contract, I had made, we had made an infographic where we had the number of units that was all broken out. And this is sort of a remake of that. It doesn't specifically say per unit on the bottom portion of this. You're correct, and the comments are correct. This is not directly in the contract.
But this is how the contract will work.
This is a visual diagram of how it will work. And so it was sort of a visual representation for the public to help understand how it's intended to work.
Ryan?
So in, in my world, we would call this an addenda. And anytime you've got a contract that has an illustration or an example, you would attach it as an addenda so that future generations don't have to interpret what the intent of the contract was at inception. So if we're going to have infographics, I would just, at this point, ask that they be labeled addenda and attached to the contract so that we can memorialize these. And I think that that would give me a much greater peace of mind with inconsistent information between what we have, like what's listed in the ordinance definitions versus the contract definitions. There's things that, as we just heard, don't match what's in the contract. So I think if we grab these as an addenda and reference the addenda in our contract, that would give me a much greater peace of mind.
I agree. Any questions on the unit? Bo, do you have?
Once we're done with definitions, I have one.
Okay. Go ahead and continue on anything else that you might have, Patricia, on there in regards to the units or whatever. Okay. Bo?
Thank you.
Oh. Steve, go ahead.
I have a question in regard to units and why this has become such an issue. If the landlord who owns a commercial building has got a dumpster that is properly sized to dispose of its waste, then why does it matter whether it's two units or 30 units? We keep talking about how people should pay the proper fair share. Well, if they've got a properly sized dumpster, to me, it shouldn't matter how many units are in there. The trash is being disposed of properly and billed according to what it's generating. Is there a reason why units is being specified so much?
Amy?
Yes. So thank you for the question, Steve. I think that we have problems in the community with people using roll-offs, the big roll-offs, like you have out in the flats or at Dark Lake or Woodland improperly. So people who... We have people in the community who say, "I don't make waste, and so I don't need to pay." And so they're not paying. And so, or, "My business doesn't make enough waste to qualify as having an account." Well, it's not fair to say that a business doesn't collect waste and then charge other businesses for waste. And so the idea of creating new terminology to identify waste-producing residents or dwellings, if we want to call them that, Dan, or businesses, was to better account for who's creating the waste and make sure that people are paying an account. The roll-off containers are supposed to be for residential waste only, and they're abused by commercial. And so if you don't have an account and you're not paying and you're a self-haul, self-haul means go to the landfill. But that's not happening. It's going to the roll-off. And so we're, we're having problems with, we have so many dumpsters in the community. Alaska Waste in the contract is required to pick them up only so many times, but we're way over that many times. And last year, we spent, Jenna, almost $300,000 out of the enterprise fund to cover the extra roll-off pickups. And so we're trying to equalize that out and make sure that there's enough containers in the community so that trash is being collected properly and not just put in a roll-off. Because when that gets passed on to the customer, that's, that's going to be quite an increase in the bill. So that's why we're talking about units. We're hoping to be able to identify people who are creating trash and not paying for a solid waste bill.
Right. Otherwise, everybody's rates are going up.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ryan?
I have probably...
Oh, excuse me. Ryan, Bo, I let Steve go before.
Sorry, Bo. No problem. So, so when you say roll-offs, you're referring to a dumpster, right? Not the roll carts? So we're, we're using a lot of terms that are very similar.
Okay, right. So thank you. A roll cart would be like the bear-proof roll carts, the individual people have. And you can either have them at your residence, or if you're a business and you have a small enough waste stream, you can have one or two at your business. Those are the roll carts. The dumpsters are, if you think about the front tip, drive up... The people on the radio can't see my hand motions, but yes. And then, the roll-offs are the, the big ones that actually roll off the back of the truck that would be like at the end of Bell's Flats or the end of Woodland Drive or by Bayside Fire Station. They're the same size as like the cardboard recycling, those large ones.
Okay, thank you. So my, my question is, or concern, is we've heard a lot of public testimony in the past few weeks, and I'm concerned that, thinking, and this is in reference to units and how we're billing, I think residential seems pretty straightforward. This seems to be a commercial issue. I'm concerned, a few, a few things, so bear with me, that we're potentially going to create prob, more problems to solve one problem. And so why, the reason I have that concern is based on testimony, but also if our rates are going to go up across the board for residential, commercial, that implies that some businesses will be paying a substantial amount more. And I'm worried about some of these examples that were given to us, and that based on how we're defining these, are there examples where there's small businesses in town that are going to receive huge bills that, that are just unreasonable based on how we're defining this, not on how much trash they're producing? I'm worried about the definitions on this one.
We can pull another chair up for you, Jenna.
Yeah, I'm pretty tall, so this works out great. So our original contract, we break it down between commercial, multifamily, and residential. Our issues we're seeing is there's categories that don't fall under any of those options. So if you are not multifamily or residential, you're considered a commercial. But if you're a multi-use building, so if you have a business and residence, you will fall under, not under, a commercial. So by going to units, we thought we could capture those kind of outliers of like, oh, if you have a multi-use, like, what is the service needed? Because you are charging other residents based off of their household. Like a single-family home gets one roll cart or a self-haul, or a duplex, they get two and two self-haul. So trying to make that fair for everyone. So that was our intent of moving towards units, is kind of, I guess, everybody is a unit and not, are you residential, are you commercial, are you multifamily? And that's it. So that's kind of the intent of going that direction.
Go ahead, Bo.
So are there, I mean, this is, might be a difficult question to answer, but are there going to be scenarios if we adopt this language through this amendment to where we have small business owners who have, by definition, multiple units but don't produce a lot of garbage? They do, I just want to make sure, for those scenarios, if it's a small business, but by definition, they have, could potentially have multiple units but don't produce a lot of garbage, are they going to be able to scale down? And that's my concern, is that they're going to be forced to scale up and pay a really large amount of money for their garbage removal. That's the one I'm still unclear of.
I'm unclear of the, an example of a small business that would have multiple units. So is the small business, business the building owner or the, the actual business that's in the building?
We'll just call it the structure. If there's a structure that has multiple types of units based on our revised definition, and that encompasses one business, we'll just say one, I understand your point, that's why this is going to be a difficult one to answer, but I just want to make sure we're being mindful of, if we go through with this amendment, that we're not creating a scenario where, because of our new definition, we're going to force a small business into paying an astronomical amount of money without having options to scale down. I just want to make sure the scale down is very clear to everyone in the room and those listening, that that is an option. If they have a complex structure that will result in multiple units being billed, are they able to scale down? Because somewhere, we're, we're making up the gap of money somewhere based on Alaska Waste wanting to change how they view our, view customers. That money's coming from somewhere. I need to know, if it's, if we don't amend it, it sounds like it's going to be applied across the board, residential, commercial. If we do amend it, where's that money coming from? Do we have specifics on types of commercial businesses? It's coming from commercial. That seems to be clear to me. I'm just trying to make sure we all know what we're talking about. Where is that money going to come from?
Okay. So without having a specific building to answer your question to, I'm struggling with an answer, but I'll, I'll let the smart people next to me. But the, the scale down, there is an option for people, because we have businesses in the community that have a lot of business in the summer and a lot less in the winter. So if you're, if you have a business and your standard option is a two-yard dumpster, if you haven't already scaled down to one or two roll carts, you can. So there's a significant saving. So your two-yard dumpster that's at 326 right now, if you find that your business is slowing down and you're not producing enough waste, you can call Alaska Waste, say, "Hey, I would like to switch to roll carts," and you can switch to one or two roll carts. So your 326 has now went to under 50 or 100, or under 100 if you have two. So there is a scale-back option for the, the two-yard dumpster, if you're not making that much waste. That First Amendment took care of that. If we have a building that, say, has three residents on the top and two businesses on the bottom, our current contract would look at that building and say that is a habitable building on, it's a, it's a premises, it's a habitable building on a tract of land, it's required service. So if you look at our contract right now, you look at that building with three residents and two...
Businesses.
Businesses. Thank you, Scott. And it, it would require one, one dumpster, and then it would require a two-yard dumpster, and then that owner or customer could ask for one roll cart or two roll carts if their waste stream did that. But any other three residents in the community would all be required to have their individual roll carts. But any other three residents in the community would all be required to have their individual roll cart. And every other business in the community would be required to have, if they were separated. And so that's what makes it so confusing. So if I happen to own a business and I have my own building, then I have to pay a certain amount. But then, once I have a business that's in a multi-building, then it all becomes very confusing. So as we were trying to figure out how to best make it so that everyone was paying into this system and we made sure that we were covering what we needed to cover, that's how the units evolved. The multi-use building is the hardest building that we have tried to deal with. If it's an apartment building, that is pretty easy. If it's a all commercial building, it's pretty easy. But when we put multiple uses in there, then it all becomes very confusing.
Any further, Boe?
Sure, yeah, so that's, 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 thank you for that, that was complicated question. So thanks for being able to tease that out for me, it's really helpful. So that is my, one of my main concerns with this amendment is, I just want to make sure we be mindful of downstream impacts that we, we just didn't think of ahead of time because this, I agree, and I'm sorry, Ryan, I'm kind of going to jump into another concern here real quick, but I agree with some of the public comment and even from a couple of us here on the assembly. I have read through this and it's two hundred and two page entirety. This, I agree, isn't, I, I wouldn't consider this necessarily an amendment, more of an overhaul. I mean, this is massive and, and I don't want to discount the amount of work that went into it because it was done very well and there's been a lot of care to explain this to people. But my, my other very large concern is how, just the scale of this and that there's so many people that are having a really hard time digesting all of this information. We're still trying to just tease out definitions and we're looking to potentially pass this in a week. Is, and this is going to be another difficult one, is there any way we can break this down into smaller bites? I don't want to marginalize the work that went into this, but can we break this down into smaller bites via smaller amendments that we can just chip away at? Well, you know, I mean, it's, it's, I'm serious, this is, this is challenging. It's challenging for us to digest, it's challenging for the public, I mean-
Yes, we, we can do multiple things. I, I remember that it's not just us amending it, it's a contract with Alaska Waste, so anything that we want to amend, they have to agree to as well. So we can't pick and choose things, you know, like this is the most important thing to us and they need to, they need to agree with us. But I think the number one thing that we need to concentrate on is that customer count. If you want us to scale this amendment back to a smaller amendment, that we can absolutely do that. And, and maybe we're too ambitious, that, that's fine, we'll accept that feedback. But I, I really do want to address that customer count and how they calculate what those rates are because for everyone who is suffering under the three twenty-six, I definitely don't want it to go up to four twenty-three in one step.
Okay, thank you, and that's the reason I bring it up, is, is this is just a lot of information. And again, I don't, I appreciate the work that's gone into it, but it's just a lot. And it's, it's, it's my, it is a concern that, that we're hearing from the public, we're hearing it from the assembly that I think it's too much at once, but I understand your point and I appreciate that. It isn't just one sided, we can't just make the decision on, on our own. But if, if there was a way to do it that was, not necessarily, for lack of a better word, put it just cleaner, easier for, for people to just process and just look at it at face value, have an opinion and then move on, but having this much information changed in a two hundred page contract all at once, I think is just overwhelming for everybody on both sides.
It wasn't just a lawyer, it was also a committee. Ryan, you have the floor.
It's been so long, let me try and remember. No, I'm just, I'm just teasing. So I've got, I actually have a few questions. I actually thought I understood until you went into that definition and now I, now I'm back on the other side of it. So I need to try and also rationalize this to myself, so.
Maybe you guys should answer.
Well, here, here's the, here's the difficult part, right? If a contract is this hard, it shouldn't be a contract, right? So, and I'm looking at this from the contractual standpoint, not, not the code rework or the ordinance. I'm just looking at, you know, me, I only care about contracts. So, so as I try to tie customers back, the only thing that kept resonating with me is, at the Kodiak Island Borough, we have essentially a customer list that are identified by property IDs or customer IDs. Is it safe to say that anybody has a customer ID is also going to have a garbage bill?
That's the ideal world, yes.
So what's, what's preventing us from, what's preventing us from getting our customer list and saying, hey, customer, according to our assessment, we've already done the legwork, according to our assessment, you have a multi-use building that you're assessing this thing, you're going to go into a, you know, tier one agreement. Hey, other client over here, you have a single family residence, you're going to go into this tier agreement. It, it seems to me we already have all the information. I'm just wondering, is this too simplistic to tie that to it? Because, you know, again, not to discount all the work, but this is confusing.
We could definitely add the definition for multi-use, but then the question is, like, me being a resident, if I have a multi-use building that has three apartments upstairs and two businesses downstairs, if by our contract now they're commercial, they can request one or two. As a resident paying for my house, I have only two people in my house, and so you're telling me a three residents and two businesses producing the same amount of trash as me, or equivalent. So I think moving away from commercial, commercial being truly commercial and then adding the multi-use building could be beneficial, but then we have to look at how we can identify what they require. Like is every residential unit in a multi-use building, do they need like self haul or a roll cart? So, which can be done.
I'm going to let you go ahead and follow up, Ryan, because you have the floor and then Steve has a question.
So I can't seem to get away from this idea about already having the assessments. So let's just take this from a pure number standpoint. We have, I'm just going to make a number up, eight thousand customers, right? We have eight thousand assessments that exist already in our inventory, in our database. Let's just say we have five thousand homes, okay? Now we're dealing with three thousand customer, your commercial customers or, you know, businesses or things like that. It seems to me that the majority of the issues that we're talking about really result to a commercial basis where I think where if, if we're looking at taking these down to a bite size thing, why don't we, why don't we address the residential first? Which seems to me, based off of my entirely erroneous, made up numbers, that that's the lion's share of, of this contract. Then let's go and address the commercial side of this because I, I think that the, the, in my opinion, I think this actually needs to be two different contracts. I think you had, need to have a residential contract and then I think you need to have a commercial contract. And I think that definitions are not interchangeable between a residential contract and the intent versus a commercial contract and the intent. So the way that I look at this, I'd like to see this in bite size as well and I'd like to see this broken into residential and into commercial, or residential and alternative. Whatever you classify it, I think residential is a lion's share that we're going to look at. I think that that would put a tremendous amount of ease on people that don't have businesses here. They're like, okay, mine's pretty straightforward, I have an infographic of one bullet, perfect. So then, then I have a harder question, while I, I know that-
Go ahead.
So is there any mechanism in, or is there any mechanism that's been considered to true up the account at the end of the year? At the end of the year, the contractor says, hey, we think that it's going to be this. At the end of the year, we do a reconciliation. Is there any mechanism like that?
Part of the tonnage comes into play.
So let me put it into like financial terms, an estimated prorata versus consolidated or I guess that would be a compilation prorata? Has a contractor provided a prorata or what these rates would be off of? So like FY twenty-five, hey, as a business owner, if I'm about to go into a contract and there's new ordinances and stuff, I'm going to perform a prorata of what that's actually going to do to my bottom line. I have to do that.
We can get projected, although it's based off tonnage and we can project how much tonnage is going to be brought to the landfill based on this commercial, residential, but those numbers aren't-
There is a point in the year where the new rates that will start July first have to get figured out. So they, David, you'll have to remind me, so the end of April?
Normally.
Normal, when, and then the, that's when they announce what the new rates will be for the next fiscal year.
Starting July first, yeah. Ryan, do you have something else, or I'd like to let Steve, if you want to-
Yep, I'll rest everything I have to say, I just, I'd like to see this in two contracts, residential and alternative, thanks.
Steve, go ahead, if you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you, I have a couple of questions. First one is, when does this contract run out?
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, I asked that question because it seems like we are drifting off into major changes in the contract and I think we have to stay basically within the frame of this contract because we've signed a contract and stick to cleaning up definitions. And then many of these points are very valid in the future contract and I have some opinions about it, but I think the only way I can properly do that would be to join the Solid Waste Committee. So I think we have to be careful-
Sounds like a volunteer.
Are we trying to recreate a new contract or are we just trying to clean up this one? Thank you.
So I think that that's actually a really good point. I know that he didn't ask me a question directly, but I, I think that this whole process has really told us that in fiscal year twenty-five, we need to be, start writing the new RFP and, and be able to do something much more spectacular than the contract that we were, that we were handed. So I think the idea of two contracts, one residential and one commercial is a great idea for the next contract. I think that that would really clarify things and I, I see an easy path forward to break this down and just take care of the stuff that we know that we absolutely need to for this contract and just simplify it. And if the assembly wants us, if that's the direction to go forward, we could certainly change a lot less and get to where we need to go. The, a lot of the blue that you see, a lot of the, the corrections that you see are just correcting formatting and, and, and stuff like that. And so it, I don't think there's as much change as it appears, but we can definitely, and not, so if the assembly is struggling this much, then the public must hate us, right? So, because I know that with three assembly members being taken along for the ride through the Solid Waste Contract Committee, I know coming in from the outside would be really hard. So if that would make it easier for everyone, we're, it's certainly something we could do to break it up.
Yeah, and for everybody's information, then we've got Ryan, then Boe. Typically, what we tried to do is, is to back it up. If, in addition to the contract expiring on six thirty, twenty twenty-seven, there is, if I'm not mistaken, three one-year extensions as a possibility on there, I think there is.
I believe that there is too, but I don't think it's in the community's best interest.
Right, I'm just saying for everyone up here what the contract language is on there. But backing up from the six thirty, twenty twenty-seven, we need to award a contract at the very latest, six thirty, twenty-six. If a contractor changes, you need a minimum of one year to gear up to get the equipment because they're not on the island, we've only got one company here. Preferably you got a sixteen month timeframe that you'd like to give there. So we need to be rewriting the contract to go to bid. We need to go to bid by around six thirty-seven, one twenty-five. So that's, you know, as, as we get done with this amendment, I see direction being given to start on that contract language. Ryan, then Boe.
So I completely agree with your guys' sentiment about as a new contract is unveiled. The problem is, is that you're changing the rules of the game that you're currently under contract with. You have a charter document and we're changing the rules of the charter contract by changing definitions, by making new terms and by redefining your customers and units. That's, you either, you either keep the contract that you have and keep the terms in place or you overhaul the entire thing. You, you don't get to change the, you don't get to change the, the rules of the game as you go. And that's what we're doing in ordinance, is we're, we're redefining the game. And then the contractor says, hey, thanks guys, this really helps us out. I just want to make one general statement and then I promise I'll just be done talking. The contractor works for the borough, the borough does not work for the contractor. And a couple of things that have been said tonight makes me feel that that's, I think we just need a refresher on that one. Not to mean any disrespect, but this, the, the contractor, no offense Dave, they, they are a, a under contract service provider to us, the owner, and we have a financial and fiduciary responsibility to our residents to ensure that the game doesn't change partway through and, and that's how I see this, so, thanks.
Boe?
Thank you, I was going to, I was, I was tempted to interject earlier to have another seat at the table for that reason. I, I do feel it's, it's somewhat unfair to ask you a lot of questions that are probably better suited for the contractor. So thank you for saying that, I agree. So back to, you know, I, I, the, the work, a lot of work has been done. I think, Madam Manager, you, you nailed it with, a lot of this work isn't going to go to waste. As we continue to go down to how we want the next contract to look, I think a lot of this work can be applied into that RFP. But I am, still my, my primary concern right now is, or it's a two parter, is, is there's so much information. I agree, a lot of it's just repeated definitions throughout these two hundred pages, but is that, it's, it's, it's a complete overhaul of the contract, two thirds of the way into it. It's confusing for everyone involved, we, we're still not, I don't think we're there yet. I think if we put this through now, it's going to, it's going to feel rushed to me and, and that's based on what we've been saying up here and, and in concert with public testimony. I'm also, I appreciate the fact that the longer we wait, the closer we get to the next one. So the changes that you want to see take place now likely won't all happen. So I, I do appreciate that and, but I don't think the work's going, going to waste. I would like to see, I, I currently am probably not going to support this amendment as it sits. And again, it's not because of the, I, I don't appreciate, I appreciate the work, I, I don't think that people have taken it lightly. If we could identify a much smaller component to make it feel like more of an amendment versus an overhaul, I'd, I'd be more inclined to support something much smaller in scope. I'm rambling a bit, but I, I, my, my fear is we, we have downstream impacts that may be unintended. And it sounds like the most of those are going to land on the commercial front and we need our new small businesses to stay afloat here right now. Those are my concerns, sorry.
Any further questions? Jared?
Um, and Amy, I mentioned this one, I would like to see Section Four reinstated, the transition planning. I think that's important for, especially if the contract period is coming to an end. I think that should be reinstated.
Further discussion?
So to summarize-
Please do, Amy.
Staff will, so we'll take this off the- Um, staff will, um, so we'll take this off the agenda for next week. Uh, we'll bring it back, um, I think we'll be ready by October 31st with a smaller amendment. So we'll bring back a much shorter, more concise amendment to the work session on October 31st, um, and possibly, uh, for approval on November 7th. And then, um, if there's an ordinance change to go with it, we'll bring that then too. I, I'm not sure what that will look like if we needed to make any ordinance changes if we're just concentrating on customer count. Um, does that sound like a good schedule?
Nova, you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the assembly and manager, these items are unfinished business on the agenda and we can't take them off the agenda. You can postpone them indefinitely or fail them or do other things with them. And then we can, if you postpone them indefinitely, they technically get killed and we can bring them back as new ones later on. Yep. Thank you.
Jared?
Uh, I just want to throw out that I'm, I'm fine with looking at the, the whole thing, um, as, as, as what is presented to us, um, today. I think, um, what ten, what, uh, what can happen, and it may not necessarily happen in this one, but as you work to simplify an amendment, uh, right, contracts are webs in a way, right? There's, there's language in one section that relies on language in another section. And I just, I, my fear is that you work hard on simplifying amendment and it's actually not going to be that much simpler. Or do you think that that's reasonable to do without having a lawyer get, um, their hands on it? Or maybe you should. But I, you know, it's, to me, everything is already here. It's packaged. Um, it's, it's cohesive. Um, and if we start to break it apart, then we lose that, we kind of lose that cohesion and then we might, there might be.
Mess it up.
Other kinds of unintended consequences, you know, which, you know, you, you can't predict. You go insane. But, um, so for that, I would, I prefer to keep it intact for what it's worth.
Scott?
Well, I was on the committee and, uh, we spent a lot of time on a lot of, all of these issues that we've been talking about tonight. Um, I think the bottom line is the original contract was a mess. And the language in it was poorly written and, uh, subject to manifold different interpretations in many places. I think we tried to fix it on amendment one and it, there were still gaps that were apparent. I think one of the things that's intimidating about the final amended version amendment two is the amount of blue ink that's there. But if you look at it carefully, it explains things better than it did in the past. I think if you read it carefully, maybe it takes another two weeks so that everybody has time to read these things. I think there will be challenges if we try to split it into two contracts because there are entities that are commercial and the ownership is commercial and there are residences in the same unit and, uh, the same building, the premise, I guess you'd call it. And so that becomes a challenge too. How do you divide that up and everything? Uh, we did have discussions in the committee about just making the owner responsible. That's it. Only one person gets the bill. It's the owner. If he wants to pass it on as a prorated for each of the apartments in the building that he owns, that's fine. That's between him and the tenants. Uh, but that didn't make it through because there's all kinds of pushback about that from landowners, uh, land, landlords. And, uh, they would rather have it be dealt with by the tenants, which you can understand, especially if you have a lot of units in your building. Uh, on the other hand, I think that, uh, staff has done a remarkable job on this. I think it's very clear in the way that it should be interpreted. I think that the lack of familiarity is one of the things that's a problem for some of the, uh, people reading it. But if you take the time to read it carefully, I think it'll, all the issues will be explained. Thank you.
Okay, Ryan.
So I just want to illustrate how confusing this is, uh, for somebody who sat on the committee. Because when you just called, uh, you know, a commercial facility with, uh, places up and places down, and then you referred to it as, um, what did you refer to it as here? You.
Premise.
A premise. You actually were defining what a unit is, uh, under the definition. So I just want to make sure that.
I just want to make sure that you understand you're looking at the ordinance, not at the contract.
Shouldn't they match?
They should, but they're talking about different stuff.
Okay, right now Ryan has the floor. Continue, Ryan.
I'll yield the floor to Dr. Smiley.
Thank you.
Scott?
No.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to get a little order back here. So, um, any further discussion? Okay.
May Jenna ask a question?
Sure.
So comments are made about, um, basically updating definitions or adding definitions, which totally understand that. What, an option could be, we can keep the residential and the commercial, but we can add another definition for multi-use, which has multiple residence and commercial. But the question is, how would you guys like us to determine what service do they need? Because commercial, a whole building, they can request one or two if they want to. But that's not going to work and I don't think it's very fair to other residents that have one roll card, but you're telling me a person that has three can have one.
I think, I think that what I'd like to see, I understand your question. I'd like to see you guys work with it every day. We up here don't. I'd like to see you bring suggestions back as to, because you're looking at trying to be fair to all of the customer base and I agree with that concept. So am I. And so I, I think you have a little discretion to bring, to bring back some options on there. And I see Ryan and then Bo would like to respond. Ryan?
So a couple of options. Um, you know, Code of Federal Regulations uses square footage in most of their safety-based regulations. Uh, square footage is one option. Uh, domicile and number of people, and there's another option. Uh, service or the, the basis of the business, if they're a high-volume producer of garbage, uh, that's another consideration. I think that if you created, um, some sort of decision ma- making matrices that applied universally, you know, uh, you know, is this a residence? Yes, it goes this way. Is this a commercial building? It goes this way. And you can just follow a decision tree, uh, and, and, and scope out what those are. Again, if it's simple and you're, and we're looking for universal, a, a matrices, right, or a legend that someone can follow along with, and this is, this is almost it. This, this really is almost it. I, I think we're really, really close. Um, I would like to see something like that. So.
Okay. Bo, you had a comment or question?
Uh, thank you. Um, a lot of good points have been made since my last question and commentary. I, I, if we could, yeah, I think that's, there, there seems to be a recurring theme of working, uh, blurring the lines between commercial and residential seems to be causing a lot of, uh, confusion. Um, and, and so if that's, you know, if that's something that could get us and the public more comfortable with this amendment, um, because I do, I do appreciate, uh, the comment that, that, yeah, I, I agree that a lot of contractual language is linked together, especially when you're talking about definitions that are repeated multiple times throughout a document. Um, but it does seem to me that, that that would be a, something we, we should explore because that seems to be where the, the confusion's coming. So I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Jared and then Steve.
Oh, no.
Jared, I, I wanted you to.
I was just pointing, yeah, the, um, I'm not sure this is something, this is handed, given to us, um, a few weeks ago. It may not be as in-depth as you want, but we got some kind of flow chart that, that looks like that.
I think we have open for there.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Steve, go ahead.
Um, when I commented earlier, I did not necessarily mean that this needs to be totally rewritten. I just think a lot of the comments have been pushing to totally changing the contract. So I think we need to keep the scope proper and admit to everybody that this was a poor contract from day one, eh, but we signed it. And so therefore, we basically need to live with it. Just some cleaning up. And I don't know if that mean, takes a whole rewrite. But I do think a lot of what has been said tonight needs to be taken care of in creating the next contract. And Mr. Arndt, I believe you are very correct that we need to start on this very soon because the timeline is quite rapid, as you said, putting, getting an RFP out, then getting it accepted, then giving the contractor proper time to prepare to do the job. Um, whether it be someone else off island or someone on island but needs to get equipment or try to figure something out with Alaska Waste to take over that equipment, um, which they did from Bueller, um, that's where we need to focus for the hard questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We don't completely have consensus up here tonight. Um, what I'd, I'm counting two that don't mind going forward with, with, um, with the rewrite. Um, I'm hearing two. Steve's kind of going both ways. I'm reading Steve as both ways. Uh, so it's, but it's potentially three to split it up. I think it would be nice to have the option of changing something, maybe reducing it on there. Uh, we have, we have two members, uh, missing. We'll have one new member coming on. Mr. Turner won't be here after the next meeting. And, um, I'm not sure exactly what, what Larry's, um, return will be to us. I'm hoping it's by that first part of November. He was on the committee. So, um, Ryan, is there something you'd like to say? And then I'd like to give the floor to Amy.
I just wanted to take a moment when we're not talking about a heated discussion and just acknowledge the fact you guys were literally given an impossible task. You guys were given something that someone else did incorrectly. And I just want everyone listening and in the audience and everyone to know that what we're dealing with is not anything that this current administration has, that this isn't your commissioning. So I appreciate and, and truly do applaud your guys' efforts on taking on, this, this is a daunting task. And I just want you guys to know that you do have my sincere appreciation. So any of the feedback or comments, do not take personally. This is about the instrument at hand. So, Patricia, thank you very much for everything that you're doing with this. So just want to acknowledge that.
And Jenna and Amy.
Patricia, yeah.
So, y- yes, and we had, I was got on the assembly as this had come forward and it was a disaster from one, day one. And I, and I'm going to say, part of the reason I felt it was a disaster was even before Amy came on, um, was that we weren't allowed to talk about it because the format of which the borough, um, put it out for proposal was trying to tell us that, uh, the information had to be kept confidential and we couldn't be told. And I lost my cool over that. That was an executive session. Yeah. Thank you. To say, you know, that you can't show us what the rates are is asinine. And, um, so I want to make sure none of that shit happens again. So, um, I just did. Thank you. So, Amy, you have the floor.
Um, so, since the clerk has corrected us, next week, um, we either have to deal with it as it's presented or postpone it. I, I think a good idea for us to do is to, um, take the contract that was passed, add the First Amendment to it and look at it just like that and see where we're at. And then figure out what we need to add to that to make sure that our customer count is taken care of correctly. Talk to Alaska Waste if there's anything that, um, they disagree with or find out where they stand because they have to sign it as well. And then just do the basic amount that we know that we have to do, um, to get us across the finish line, I think, till 2027. Um, that would be, I, I think all the work that is done and it has been considerable, um, is just prep work for that RFP. And knowing, knowing all of the flaws and inconsistencies that are in this contract, I think, uh, will definitely help staff create a better RFP. I do think we need a solid waste contract committee or a, a solid waste RFP committee for that probably too, as we move forward. But, um, so I, we can push forward with what we have and try to clarify, or we can take a step back. And so, um, those are vastly different options. So just, there's five of you. Four of you just need to come together and agree on a direction.
Jared?
Um, what are the, uh, what are the short-term impacts of, of delaying? We just need to have something by the, the April 2025 before they set the rates for.
Wait, we're, our, we're behind.
We're behind.
We haven't updated our 2020, like, so we would have updated rates on July 1st, um, but we have not because we were waiting for this amendment. Once, if we agree on the customer count with Alaska Waste, um, the rates will go down. So Alaska Waste isn't in a hurry because their rates that they're collecting right now are more than they will be once the amendment passes.
So the, so the, um, uh, so the impact of delaying this even further is, some are likely going to keep paying a slightly higher rate than.
Yes.
Correct. Any further discussion? Ryan?
I would like to get that some quantified. I'd like to, like, say, okay, well.
It depends on, I feel like too, the customer count. Like, that's the most important thing right now because it's a ratio. Like, we need to determine a customer is a person that holds a solid waste, I think, service. So that one person, and if they have, like Amy explained, three entities, it's not counting three, it's counting one. So now our denominator is going down.
So it sounds like the most important aspect that we have to solve is what a customer is.
Yes.
Right?
Well, the, so at the bottom of this sheet that you were handed, it lists if the, if Alaska Waste does the customer count how they want to, residential is 5524 and a two-yard dumpster is 42329. If we fix the customer count and ensure that we do it the way that it's been done all the other years in this contract, it goes down to 4814 and the two-yard goes down to 31924. So.
And that is just with clarifying customer count?
That's just customer count. That's not clarifying anything else.
That's what I'd like to step back to. I'd like to step back to the customer count and make that a prioritization above all else in here.
Bo?
I agree with Mr. Sherrett. And that's, that's, I, I did a poor job earlier. That, that's a much easier way to both of, thanks to the manager and Mr. Sherrett. Uh, I, I'm still not sure. So when we think about these differences, the money's coming from somewhere. Um, so maybe that's, that is where we need to kind of dial in a little more is who's going to be making up the difference. That's what I'm still unsure of. Um, it sounds like some people, based on how we define the customer, are going to be paying more regardless of which option. Um, because that, that, that's a, that's a large difference between both residential and commercial. I'm just curious what types of businesses or residences or who's making up that difference? Or is it simply that?
Do you just want, we, I don't have the handout now. So I did a breakdown of the five components that make up the calculation for the bill. So that'd be a good example, I feel like, for what you're asking for. Because it shows like your CPI, your PPI. Um, I don't want to say fixed costs, but they're not impacted by the customers and Kodiak. There's also the fixed cost with no inflations and the profit, profit fixed number as well. So we can kind of get a better breakdown to see, like, those numbers don't change, but we're, we don't control those numbers. We get those numbers.
It's the detail.
It's, yeah. So the customer count and disposal cost is also in that, um, it's called disposal actual. It's, yeah, so the customer count and disposal cost is also in that, um, it's called disposal actual. So our disposal cost for the landfill is 65. Then we take that, yeah, percent difference of those ones and go with the customer, the residential tons and customer ratio pending off the two years. So we can get a better breakdown for a visual, um, because I can go back and plug in different numbers. Oh, if we had thousand less people, our new bill would come, go up to, I don't have a number, like $55 now instead. So I can do a couple of different scenarios to show that impact.
Go ahead, Bo.
So just, just a quick follow-up. So, uh, so thank you for that. Um, and, and the reason I'm, I keep going down this road is, is, you know, looking at this infographic here, you know, clearly with the, if we go with amendment number two, everyone wins based on this infographic. But I, I'm skeptical that there's, there's always someone who's not going to come out ahead in this. I wonder what kind of impacts, uh, who, who is that going to impact and how? Um, that's what I'm really trying to get to is, is clearly that, that rates will go down, but, and that will benefit a lot of people. Um, but I'm just trying to make sure, and not, not to say that I'm advocating one way or another with this question, but I think we need to make sure all of that information is available. So who's not going to be coming out ahead with amendment number two and to what level?
Some that may not have been paying for garbage. That's primarily number one. They will come out paying more. Amy? Me too. 10-minute recess. Because I'm spent too.
That's, it's, it's a deep one.
But that is, you understand what I'm saying.
But I make sure, I make sure that, I get that same intent. But are we going to screw other, over other people too?
Not really. I've been watching it for five years.
Yeah. It's mostly just, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
This was.
What?
Okay. Next item is the review of ordinance 2025-03, amending Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.25, Solid Waste Collection and Disposal. To clarify language and requirements for the solid waste services. Basically, what we're doing is going to be probably postponing indefinitely and coming back with that. So we're not going to even talk about it tonight. Okay. So then that moves us on to discuss ordinance amending various sections of the Kodiak Island Borough Code Title 17, zoning to include defined intent and development standards for accessory dwelling units. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kodiak Island Borough Planning and Zoning Commission began working on a potential amendment related to accessory dwelling units starting in May of 2023. After many months of reviewing the existing regulations in light of accessory dwelling unit regulation guides from both AARP and the Alaska Municipal League, the commission held its first public hearing on amendments related to accessory dwelling units in February of 2024. The commission held three public hearings on the amendments, making multiple revisions to the draft ordinance. It passed on June 18th, 2024, and they recommended that the ordinance come in front of the assembly. We've seen this before in a work session. However, this is another one of those things that has a lot of changes. In your packet tonight, you'll have that regulation guide, but we did not add the actual code change. So sitting in front of you on the dais, you'll see this that says Agenda Number Three on top. So in order to make this conversation easier, because there are so many changes, we broke up the conversation to happen over two work sessions tonight and the 31st. So you'll see that there's four things that we're going to talk about tonight. The removal of the conditional use permit requirement for ADUs that meet the development standards. The conditional use permit remains an option for ADUs that do not meet one or need more development requirements. We're also talking about changes to current definition of a accessory dwelling unit based on best practices. We'll talk about changes to the parking requirements of ADUs within the city of Kodiak and those outside the city of Kodiak. Those proposed changes require one space for ADUs in the city and two inside the city limits and two outside of the city limits. This was something that the Planning and Zoning Commission talked about quite a bit, and I know Mayor Arnt has a lot of opinions on. And changing the size restriction to go up to 800 square feet for all ADUs, no matter what the zoning district. So that's about half of the issues that we're going to talk about ADUs. I know it's very hard to talk about ADUs without also talking about short-term rentals, but we're trying to focus just on the regulation side of ADUs. And then obviously, we need to have more discussions if we're going to try to restrict their use as short-term rentals in the future. But Mr. French is here tonight. He is our ADU master. And he knows a lot more about this and sat through all those planning and zoning meetings. So he's going to guide us through this conversation and answer your questions on those particular areas, hopefully.
Thank you, Amy. Chris?
Chris French, Kynew M. Director. If we, based on the agenda item today, as the manager mentioned, we did have four items on here. The first item there, we did have some discussion at previous work session regarding the removal of the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is in play in certain zones that require it. For example, the rural residential zone, it requires the CUP no matter whether it's an attached or detached ADU. Whereas in the other zones that have the CUP, for example, like an R1, it's required to have the CUP only if it's a detached ADU. If it's attached, it doesn't require the conditional use permit. The discussion that we had at the planning commission level dealt with, you know, how can we allow more ADUs without the conditional use permit? And when was it appropriate to require the conditional use permit? So looking at best practices, both in the AARP document and the document that AML put together, working with AARP, one of the things they mentioned in there is to try to remove the conditional use permit as much as you can, rely on the development standards that you have in place for your ADU to make sure you're covering all the bases of what could be an issue with an ADU, and then allow it to be permitted administratively. Now, what it also said in the AARP document and the AML document was, you can still use the CUP, but use it in a way where if one of the development standards is not met and someone wants to still try to build an ADU, then they can go through the conditional use permit process, which is a public hearing process, which is a discretionary review process before the planning commission. And they can try to justify why they can't meet one or more of these development standards. And so that is why the CUP is proposed to be removed in the ordinance before you, but remain in place in case someone wants to apply for it if they're not meeting one or more of the standards. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. We can talk about it. I know Assemblymember Smiley had some discussions with me regarding, when we were up here before, regarding the conditional use permit as a way to notify the public. I did look through some more research that I had on ADUs. That certainly comment has come up before in terms of proposing to remove the conditional use permit. One of the suggestions that I read in another section, another document that AARP had on ADUs, was that you could require that a, someone who's proposing an ADU to notify the neighbors, at least the adjoining property owners, of their pending ADU application. And that way, you are notifying people and they understand what's being proposed. So that is a potential option. That is something that we could add to the proposed ordinance. So I just want to throw that out there to the assembly tonight.
Questions, Scott?
If you make the notification of neighbors about a pending ADU, you're relying on the small number of people to be informed. Whereas when the borough does it, it's 500 feet, I believe.
It depends on the size of the lot, but yeah, it can be 500 or even sometimes larger.
And I think also, when the borough does it, it's done. We'll know, we know that it's going to happen. If you're relying on an individual, they may or may not do it. And they may not be very forthcoming about it. The concern that I have, the basic concern I have, is that for most people, the house is their biggest investment. They think of it as their nest egg for the future if they're going to retire. And they worry that the ADU that their neighbor is building is going to have a pile of beer bottles out in front of it and some drunken fishermen living in it. And that that will depress the value of their house when they want to sell it. I think we have to be concerned about the fear that people have, whether it's reasonable or not. I think it exists. And I think informing them as much as we can is an important component of our responsibility in allowing these things to go forward. My memory from the last time we dealt with ADUs, which is maybe five years ago, we only had a few that were built. Housing, building costs have gone up since then, so we're probably not going to have that many fielded. But it's still, I think it really bothers people that their investment, their largest investment, could be jeopardized, at least in their imagination. Thanks.
Beau?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, and I know it's just used as an example, but that we are mindful of categorizing people in our community, in this case, a very large portion of our community, in a negative way. So please be mindful of that. So the CUP requirement, so I understand that the ease of, as long as, you know, standards are met, you know, removing that would just kind of remove some of that administrative burden for folks wanting to pursue building an ADU. Could we, so some of the issues that are highly contentious in the community, one of them being parking. That topic, I've had a lot of input from both sides. Some people say, you know, get rid of that requirement. Some people are like, we have to have it because I'm not going to have anywhere to park. Could this, could the CUP requirement address parking specifically? So let's say we did not allow for an expansion of parking for ADUs. Couldn't that be addressed through an individual CUP?
So the way the, yes, the way the ordinance is before you, as the manager pointed out, if you're within the city, it's one additional unit for the ADU. It's two if you're outside the city of Kodiak. You know, the assembly could make that be too required, no matter where you are, just too required for an ADU. If someone has an issue, maybe they don't have the room and they want to go forward with the ADU, then that means they're not meeting one of the development standards, and they would have the option of going through the conditional use permit and be able to justify why they didn't need to have two spaces for that ADU. So they could do that as part of the conditional use permit process.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was curious about. There's a lot of, I'm sure you've been around through town enough now to see we have a lot of irregular lots, different scenarios that could come into play here. So folks that are, that have unique scenarios, we could, if we were not to loosen our parking requirements, those people in those unique circumstances could address that through the CUP process.
Yeah, the other thing I'd want to point out to the assembly, too, is we have a provision that's proposed to be added. This was based on comments we received at the planning commission meetings on this. And that's one where you are, one of the standards is, is that you have to meet the minimum lot size of your zone in order to be approved administratively for an ADU. So for example, if you're in an R1 zone, it's a 7,200 square foot minimum lot size, that lot's going to have to be at least 7,200 square feet for you to be able to meet at least that standard to get approved administratively. If you don't, then you do have the option to go through the conditional use permit process.
Thank you.
The, I'll go ahead and interject a little bit here, too. I have a problem with allowing the duplex in R1, single-family residential district, potential on every lot without anybody going through a rezone. I, this is a duplex. We've increased the size in here. This is not just a one-bedroom mother-in-law apartment that was allowed in different circumstances with different parking requirements based on size to going to 800 square foot. I know duplexes, that the units, each unit is under 800 square feet. And so my problem is, we're not having a discussion on zoning. We're doing away with the R1 zoning, as I see this. And that's wrong. There needs to be requirements for it and distinction. And the allowance for one spot, and even two, I have a problem if you're building an 800-square-foot additional dwelling unit, because you can go around, we have plenty of problems for parking on the existing lots. And usually, I'll say, we'll take the Alusion Homes area. There is not enough off-street parking, and it creates enough of a nightmare for the city public works when the weather gets bad and the roads are slippery. It's a nightmare. The roads outside of the city limits do not allow parking on the roads. And we're already having problems because we don't have the enforcement mechanism on that, and it's creating problems. To me, one space for a unit, that's not a possibility. There's no way, shape, or form that that works. Two, maybe on the smaller ones and that. You know, I can take you to, I can take you to single-family homes with six vehicles in there. I can take you to single-family homes with one RV, boat, and three vehicles in it. It really depends. Some people are more than willing to take care of the parking, but this allowing only, requiring only one space, that's not going to fly. And that's something we will talk about with the city of Kodiak on there. Now, the other problem is, we had next to no, there was, I think, only, well, we're going to say four different people from the public testifying at this on the, on the planning and zoning level. And two of those people are in this room, Seema Groot and myself. So it has not been well advertised at all or attended compared to when we had the discussions in the very beginning. But my problem is, we're increasing the square footage in this, and we're reducing the parking. And we're allowing it to happen randomly throughout the R1 district without addressing, do we want to do away with the R1 zoning and go with R2? Start with R2? So that's a possibility. So these are some of the issues I have on there.
Ryan, and then Beau?
One of the recommendations in the AK Do's and Don'ts is municipalities should avoid imposing setback requirements. Can you explain the setback requirements? I know very little about it, other than when I do something wrong, the service district chair puts his nose in my business. So can you go over the setback stuff?
So the setbacks change depending on what zone you're in. Now, that particular statement in there is having setbacks just for ADUs. The vast majority of ADU ordinances, the ADU is still subject to the ordinances of the underlying zoning district that they would be placed in. So, and that's what the proposal would be here as well. They still would have to meet the setback requirements of the individual zoning district that you're in.
Follow-up, Ryan?
Yeah, so I guess I was looking for a little more specific. So I understand, maybe this can prime the conversation. So I understand that you have the front of the lot, and setbacks have to be 10 or 15 feet on certain sides and 50 feet on another. Are we talking about being that specific with ADUs as well?
So ADUs would be subject to the individual zoning district setbacks. We have some front setbacks that are 15. We have some front setbacks that are 25 feet, some larger than that, depending on your zones. And certainly, side yards can range from 5 to 10 to 15 feet as well. And rear yards can vary as well, from 10 to larger rear yard setbacks. Those would still apply to the ADU as if they would apply to the principal structure. You know, if you're building a new house. The same setbacks would apply to the ADU as they would for a new house.
Beau?
Thank you. And then, so to the comment about the size of the ADUs, my home is not admittedly very much larger than that. So I'm curious, there's, I imagine there's no limitations as far as if we went 800 square feet, how many bedrooms they could have in there? It could theoretically be a two-bedroom, one bath.
Yeah, it doesn't limit the number of bedrooms. I will say, you know, I had some discussion with the commission early on when we were talking about changing the square footage amount. There's various ways you can do that. If you looked at the AARP document, as well as the AML document, it will mention in there different ways to handle the square footage. Some of those can be a percentage, as well as a square footage number. Sometimes that percentage might be 30%, 40%, 50%. And then there's also a square footage. Sometimes that additional square footage will say whichever's less or whichever's greater. It depends on, again, it's a policy decision of the community in terms of which way you wanted to go. When I talked about this with the planning commission, they felt it was simpler just to go with the 800 square feet, and that's what they went with. I'm not saying that's what the assembly, you know, should do. I think if you all want to revisit that and have us look at it, we certainly can do that. And there's a lot of options there that we can go through. And it can be based on the zoning district. So it doesn't just have to be one size fits all.
Follow-up?
Thank you. And the last is, I'm very grateful for all the documentation that you and the Planning and Zoning Commission concluded. And so one of these states, just go quickly, rattle through a few of them. Providing a home for a loved one in need of care, housing for a relative, space for a guest caregiver, having someone living nearby, extra income from renting. And I don't know, maybe I didn't realize how small my house was or how big these could be. But it feels to me that 800 square feet, and again, this is just based on my personal space and thinking about the concern that was presented a few minutes ago. I would be inclined to think that to meet these needs, which I think are great for an ADU, to provide these accommodations for folks for these different reasons, I feel that 800 seems a bit large for that. And so if we could reach some sort of compromise, or to your point, maybe base it on zoning restrictions to alleviate some concerns between R1 and R2. But I do feel that 800 feet does feel a lot like R2 to me. But that's just because I have a tiny house.
I will say one thing. The percentage does help in some cases, especially if you have, I mean, no matter what your zoning is, your lot could be bigger than that. You could have a R1 lot that's, you know, five times what the minimum lot size is. But, and so therefore, you could have a much larger home on it. The percentage does, the percentage with the square footage does help in those scenarios where, you know, maybe someone could have up to 800 square foot or even a 900 square foot if their home is, say, 2,000 or larger in size. So the percentage does help get you some larger ADUs when you have a larger property, a larger existing principal structure.
Chris, one of the things that I'm hearing here, too, it may, you brought up the percentage. It would help to bring some of that to the assembly because it's not in here.
Correct.
As to what that possibility is. Because the Planning and Zoning Commission had that also. So I think the assembly needs to see that. Go ahead, Chris?
Yeah, I was going to say, if the assembly wants us to give you some options on certain one of these standards that are under proposal to be changed, we certainly can do that. We can look at what other communities have done. There's, I mean, we're not the only community in Alaska that has ADUs. There's plenty of others. So we can look at what other communities have done. We can look at some of the best practice discussion on how you use the percentage with the square footage and bring some options forward. We can do it to the next work session and have those available, too.
I'm going to give Jared because he hasn't spoken, then. Ryan?
Thank you. Have you seen any models that, instead of looking at the square footage of the lot, look instead at the population density of the neighborhood or the community and restricting ADU and even parking spaces, not based on square footage, but based on population density?
I haven't seen them that way. The way I've seen primarily ADUs looked at is the square footage of the principal building and comparing it to that. And primarily because when we talk about ADU, it's an accessory dwelling unit. So all these standards that are in place for the ones we have today versus any other proposals, they're all meant to make that unit accessory to the principal. So it's trying not to make it a duplex situation. It's trying to say, hey, we're going to allow you to have this second unit because it's accessory to the principal unit. And so these standards are in place to make it more accessory. That can be where it's located on the lot. You know, if it's attached, there might be different reasons for how you access it versus if it's detached. All those standards in there are related to making that accessory dwelling unit accessory to the principal structure. Now, I haven't seen any communities look at neighborhood size or even lot size to dictate how big an ADU. It's usually either just a set square footage amount based on, it could be the zoning district that it's in, or it's a combination of that square footage with a percentage.
On the primary.
Yeah, with the percentage of that principal structure. Do you?
Can I?
Go ahead.
So I'm kind of interested in looking at this from a density point of view. And if you're not prepared to talk about, that's fine. But like, what obstacles or difficulties would you foresee if we decided to look at this from a density perspective? And then limiting ADUs based on density?
So I think if you're going to look at lot size, then I would look at, and the current regulations do that. Because if you look at our current regulations for the size, it's 575 square feet if it's an R1 and R2 district. It is 725 square feet if it's in any of the other districts. So that's kind of starting to get at an idea of, let's look at the lot size. Now, it's looking at the zone and the possible minimum lot size. As I mentioned, you could be R1 and have an acre lot. But the minimum lot size on that is 7,200 square feet. So using the zoning, some communities have used the zoning to determine that square footage. But usually, it's still in conjunction with that principal structure as well.
Okay, not with just raw population density of a.
Correct, yeah. I have not seen any used population density.
Okay. We'll go to Steve and then Ryan. Steve?
Well, I just touched on it a second ago, but I am a little concerned with lot size. Even with 7, 7,200 square feet, if they build a large house, how much of the remaining land is it going to take up? And is it going to make the lot crowded? So I really do kind of think a percent of lot size is an interesting thing to explore. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Ryan?
Yeah, I actually really like Jared's idea about gross population density. That, to me, is, from an environmental standpoint, that, to me, makes the most amount of sense. So I actually really like that idea. I think that I would really get behind this. And then just, I want to point out that in our packet, in the AK Do's and Don'ts, is a snapshot of other communities in Alaska. Juneau, Sitka, Kodiak is listed, Petersburg. And it talks about what they do in their areas. I didn't, at quick cursory glance, I didn't see any listed in density. So again, I, from an environmental standpoint, I really get behind that density one. Nice idea. Thanks.
Beau?
I'll just pile on more support for that idea. I think it's fantastic.
Okay. We've covered a bunch of different things, and we've given you some direction, Chris, that we'd like more information on to.
I can go through the other three if you want. I mean, the second one, under the definition proposal, that's kind of where we started with this, even before I got here. The commission had some concerns over the current definition of accessory dwelling unit. And so we built on that primarily to do a couple of things. One is, instead of having a standard that said you can only have one per lot, we put it in the definition. The reason to put it in the definition is you can't get a variance or any, or a CUP for something that goes against the definition. So if you put that in the definition, it can't be changed. Same thing with defining attached versus detached accessory dwelling unit. You have it in the definition, it's set. It can't be altered in any way. So that's why a lot of the definition is pulling from these other documents that AARP and AML put together and looking at the standard practice for what the accessory dwelling unit definition is. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns on that. Okay. So back to the parking requirement. I will say, I did have some outreach to the former city manager, as well as to the assistant city manager, asking them about if they could check on the parking requirement being one versus two for the borough. Did not have any, did not receive any comments back from them on that. You know, if the assembly wants to simplify this and just have it be required in two. in two, then, I mean, staff doesn't have an issue with that at all. And it does simplify the the ordinance.
How would we enforce that? I mean, I drove through Evolution Homes the other day, and I saw one place that had eight pickups on one lot. And how would you control for having two extra parking spots? Would you ask the city police to do it? Any idea?
It's a problem.
Yeah, if someone comes in with an A D U, we're gonna be asking them, okay, where's your parking for this? There's already a parking requirement for your single-family home. So those, if it's requirement was two, we'd be looking for two additional spaces. They would have to demonstrate those two additional spaces in addition to what they were already required for the single-family home.
Which is three, so it's five spaces they'd be looking for.
So that would be part of, now, again, that's if folks are coming through and getting their zoning compliance permits and if, you know, building permits hopefully after that.
Bo.
Thank you. And that's, and then that's the, that's the reason why, you know, if that is by far the most concern that has come, been brought to my attention was the parking requirement. It pretty much split down the middle. And that's the one, that's the one topic that has me wanting to hang on to the C U P requirement. I don't, I don't want to burden folks with with a lot of administrative functions to to get their A D U put together, but or permitted. But I do feel that the C U P, and it sounds like, could provide some flexibility if we do have kind of a blanket stance on one of these topics, that the C U P could be the tool for folks to explain maybe a unique scenario on their lot that that doesn't really fit the criteria. And so that's why I would support keeping the C U P, and that would be to address the parking issue. If we didn't expand that across the board, folk could still explain and imply using their unique circumstances. And that's just kind of my take on that one.
Thank you. Anything else you want to?
And then just, we'd already talked about the square footage amount. So I've got some guidance from from the assembly on that. So I can provide some options at our next work session on that as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to pull the assembly quick. Do you like, so when we have a big topic like this that has a lot, does this work better for us to break it into bits and direct the conver- yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, the next discussion item is D, discuss the Kodiak Island Borough Joint Use Agreement, otherwise known as the three-way, with the Kodiak Island Borough School District and the City of Kodiak. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kodiak Island Borough Assembly and the City of Kodiak City Council directed staff during a February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four joint work session to bring the three entities together to update this joint use agreement. Staff from the Kodiak Island Borough, the school district, and the City of Kodiak have met on multiple occasions and concur with the language that is included in this agreement that's in front of you. The Kodiak Island Borough School District approved the new version of the agreement at their September twenty third, twenty twenty four school board meeting, and the agreement has been signed by the superintendent and school board president. This agreement has been expired since August thirty first, twenty twenty one, and it's not a resolution or something the assembly needs to approve the manager sign, but I feel better having you seen it. So attachments included are the current update with tracking, and then the previous version is in there, and then a clean version of the new agreement that has been signed by the school district is in there. If we, we're just gonna walk through the changes. Obviously, we had to update the terms. It will begin November first of this year and continue through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. We have changed that if you want out of it at the end of a fiscal year, instead of getting thirty days notice, you should give ninety days notice. In facilities, we have included just clarification that it's the community pool and not just pool, and we added in the paved bike walking path from Benny Benson to Fort Amber Crumbie. On page three, in the scheduling of activities, no one wanted to ask the borough, so we added the borough. And in the, there's just some little language changes. But the big thing is on page five, and this is what has held up this contract from twenty twenty one, and that's the district obligation around the pool. So I'm in section eight, district obligation, letter B. My my tracking didn't work, so I don't know why. So I added it, and it's highlighted right there. You can see it in the the old contract. But B used to say, providing all major mechanical work, including the annual pool overhaul. That sentence has held up this contract for three years because the school district, I think, is spending more money than they had originally anticipated on keeping the pool up. And so they did not want to sign an agreement that had that in that. So their suggestion was to put in minor mechanical work. The borough obligation language didn't have to change because it's always said that we would provide necessary maintenance in addition to A and B in the section above. So this is where that W T I contract would come in, that we had the quote made and that overhaul that needs to be done. We've also talked with the city manager and the school district about contributing money towards that. But we don't know exactly how, what plan are we gonna use. If you remember that quote that we got, it had three different options on the levels that we repaired the pool. But the the school district did not want to say that they were gonna be the only ones in charge of that annual overhaul. And then, that's really it for changes, except for in the property damage section on page six, the very last section of the contract. Someone suggested that we add in the words involved with sponsored activities hosted in, instead of just saying using the facilities to limit liability for all the parties involved. And so that is where we are at. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you want to know about the process of how we've gotten here.
Okay, Ryan, but first, I'd like to ask, where before, like you said, in thirteen B, the district will provide all ma- major mechanical work, including annual pool overhaul. And we're changing provide minor mechanical work. So where are we saying the three parties are going to contribute towards major?
It doesn't say all three parties will, and we can't, the city has really, I mean, the city runs it as far as staffing, but they have no legal reason why they would have to. They just offered to. So I can't put that in a contract because I can't obligate the whoever the new manager is or the city council on something that they don't know about yet. But in conversations with both Mike Twenge, when he was manager, and Josie Banky as acting manager, they both indicated that the city would want to help, but I don't, that's, that's not a promise. It's not something that can go in a contract.
Okay. Ryan?
So I want to address what you just said first, because I want to be very cautious, 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 that our terminology is correct. This is an agreement. This is not a contract. So there are, there are very vast differences between a contract and a joint use agreement. And I have to apologize, I actually spent the majority of my time from Tuesday moving forward. I have a complete write-up and overhaul and several pages to go along with this that are sitting in a hotel room in Minnesota. So I want to recreate this. I want to recreate this and give this to you because I think that this is one of those critical instruments for co-governments to exist. And so I'm not sure if if I can get that copy sent back to me, but I'm really sure I can recreate with almost precise recreation if you give me just a day or two. And let me throw those ideas at you. You can take none, all, or some of them. But I think that the criticality of this agreement positions the three, I'm just gonna call it government entities, as kind of a baseline moving forward, not just for a pool, but for buildings. One of the things, I'm gonna kind of digress just a little bit. One of the things that I would like to position the borough in an agreement like this is that our facilities, change of responsibility of facilities, I won't digress too far. But, and I think this instrument is the foundation for launching future instruments. So I think that we've got to get this one exact, because this is, to my knowledge, kind of the only one that really exists or that we put any faith into.
Correct.
So I would like to use this, if, follow me, as a springboard for other agreements with specificity on certain, like, again, facilities. Facilities is gonna be just a big one for me. So if you just give me a couple of days to recreate it or get that emailed over to me.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Discussion. Jared?
Yeah, I have a couple of things that I think might dovetail dovetail a little bit from what Ryan was just talking about. This joint use agreement is, the title does say, right, facilities, but when you look at the vision statement, it's really about recreational facilities, not all of the facilities that that we share and and use together. I don't, I, because I, one reason I bring this up is like the auditorium, you know, the auditorium's not on here, but is definitely shared between just about everybody in the community, but is, but is a public facility, not a public, it's not the high school, you know, it's not designated as an educational facility anymore. It's kind of like the pool, right? The pool is not the high school pool or the district pool, it's a community pool.
But it is designated as an educational facility and has a number.
Still?
Yeah.
I thought that was changed during
No.
the construction.
No.
Okay. Which is, which is fine. It doesn't really necessarily change my, my point that if I wonder if what Ryan is talking about, doing a vast overhaul of this relationship that we have through facilities, this one, for me, is fine if it's designated like recreational facilities, since that's what the vision statement is. And then, can we talk about section thirteen? Okay, I'm a little confused with the language here because it seems like A, B, C, D, and E are, well, maybe not. Some of them apply to the pool and some of them don't, right? A, or do they all apply to everything? So let's look at B. We've been talking about this in the context of the pool, but the way that B is written makes it seem like the district is obligated for minor mechanical work on what? On all the recreational facilities that the borough owns? Do we need to designate this one's for the pool?
I think we should designate that one's for the pool. I think it's meant for the pool.
Yeah, I think so, too, but I think it might, might be helpful. And the, and I guess D and E are, they're pretty clear. So maybe it's just B about the pool, unless the pool needs its, needs its own one, own section. Those are just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Steve, go ahead. I think you have a question?
Yes. It's kind of a statement more than a question. I think that we need to make sure some terms are clarified. When they say they'll help with major yearly overhaul, I think we should come up with a percentage or something. And then, when they say they'll do minor repair, we need to come up with the definition of what that is, or it becomes very vague. And they say it's our job, and we say it should be their job. So whether it's a dollar or what, but the difference between minor and major should be clarified. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Ryan?
So if I do get that copy back or recreate it, I've addressed some of those in there. Minor is illustrated in a dollar value, a dollar value and a duration in conjunction with each other. Pool is specified, because I actually read E as provide all custodial services, period. So I think, again, if we're going to go through this, I think we should just take out anything that could be left to interpretation and and solidify this agreement. But again, that basis, the springboard, because I don't want to bog this agreement down to Jared's appoint, Jared's point, this is a recreational agreement. That's why I said I wanted to use this as a springboard for facilities, because I actually didn't view this as a facilities document. But I think that this could lead to that. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions on this? Seeing none. Amy, do you have some guidance here? I realize Ryan's saying he'll get you some more information.
I, I think once we get the extra information, we'll just update and bring it back to the assembly to have them look at it. And then, once that is approved by the assembly, it'll have to go back to the school district, and then it'll go, probably the city left.
So and so your intent will be to bring that back to the work session on the thirty-first?
I think that that work session is very large, and you should move it to the next work session after that.
Okay.
The fourteenth?
Tentatively, yeah, we can look at, at that during agenda setting, too. But thank you for that comment, Amy, on crowded. Let's take a five-minute break and get into the packet review. Um, let's take a five-minute break and get into the packet review. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene the work session and start with packet review. First item is unfinished business contract number twenty nineteen twenty-five B amendment number two with waste connections of Alaska incorporating doing business as Alaska Waste for residential and commercial solid waste collection and recycling services. Amy, I'll have you give a staff report. We talked about what we're gonna do, so might as well let you sum up.
Do you want to sum up how we're gonna handle it, Mr. Mayor, or do you want me to?
I was gonna let you go ahead and sum up how we're gonna handle it.
I was like, do you want me to do the staff report stuff? Okay, so, um, given our work session discussion for both of our unfinished business items for next week, we are going to introduce them and then we will postpone them indefinitely. And then for those subjects, we're gonna kind of start over from scratch and bring in a new, more streamlined amendment just to focus on the customer count to make sure that we're in control of how those rates go up. Um, what you'll see is the contract as it was passed. Then we'll add the first amendment in, so you'll see the contract as amended. And then any changes, um, that we make will be red and blue lined in that. So that should simplify what you see, how it's presented to the public, and it should be a lot easier to follow.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the assembly, procedure wise, I just want to remind everyone that we do have a motion on the floor. So once you have a little bit of discussion, um, then you can postpone it indefinitely if that's your desire. And technically a motion to postpone indefinitely kills the motion. You don't take a, a stand whether you don't, either way, you, you don't approve it or disapprove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll move on. Um, next is the ordinance, which I'll let you sum up on that too, which is ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash three. And this has to do with the solid waste collection also, but it's the ordinance part.
So this ordinance would have been attached to our contract change so that the same language was used in both the ordinance and the contract. Because we are changing the way that we're going to be handling the amendment, um, there will be significantly less code changes that will be required. So once that discussion starts, we'll be able to postpone that one indefinitely as well. And then we will bring any new ordinance changes in when we bring the new version of the amendment in.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing then, move on to contracts, contract number FY twenty nineteen dash twenty-two B amendment number two to contract for professional legal services with Keen and Correll PPC. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This action will extend contract number fiscal year nineteen twenty-two for one year, giving time to complete ongoing legal cases as provided for in section five B of the contract. Contract number fiscal year twenty-nine twenty-two with the firm Keen and Correll PPC, represented primarily by attorney Scott Brent Erickson for the provision of professional legal services was entered into on March twentieth, twenty nineteen with an initial term of three years. The contract was amended to extend the term for three years per the contract terms, uh, through resolution fiscal year twenty-two thirteen. The extended contract does expire November ninth, twenty twenty-four. However, we're asking for a one-year extension to cover the ongoing cases in which Mr. Brent Erickson is best suited to manage for the Kodiak Island Borough.
Thank you. Ryan?
So without getting into specifics, um, is one year enough to take on the legal endeavors that the Kodiak Island Borough is looking at? Or would we be expected to see a twenty-two Charlie series of this? What's your, what's your best guess?
I, I will, I do think that it's gonna take two years, but because we're at the end of that contract, I didn't want to extend it, extend like more than we absolutely had to because technically we should be going out for an RFP this year. So if we get to a year from now and we still don't have, um, the Supreme Court case um, that we're currently in wrapped up, then we'll probably end up asking for another year extension. I just wanted to do it one year at a time.
Continue, Ryan.
So my follow-on question is, is there anything in the code or best practices that prevents us from issuing an RFP now while still maintaining having an attorney dealing with our current caseload? What's the transition look like?
I don't know, I've never transitioned.
We can determine what that looks like. Scott?
Well, I was here when we changed attorneys. And there were a number, we sent out an RFP and there were a number of responses to that. And it took a while to do, uh, and we settled on Mr. Erickson and he's a lot better than the last one, so.
Ryan, continue.
Thank you. And realizing that this is an extension, uh, FY twenty nineteen twenty-two, I would love to see an RFP process get started for reprocurement of professional legal services. Uh, there would be nothing that would, uh, exempt the current one from bidding on that one as well. However, I, I think in the sense of a fair market and professional procurement practices, I, I think that it would be most advantageous for us to, uh, start that process as well.
Scott?
I wonder if that might hinder the effectiveness of the attorney in this lawsuit that we're engaged in, which I think is a crucially important one. I'd rather have him think that we're really behind him at this point. Thank you.
Raises a question. I, I think we could, we can do both. I think, um, staff would basically look at the contract we have and potentially any modifications that need to be done to the contract and then bring it back to us for our input and then go, what are you looking at? Oh, well, he's gonna wait, um, on there. So, so I would see, you know, this is gonna take a little time to go through, but I'm not opposed to seeing us look at that. So, um, let's follow up and see what you think, Amy, here on it. But Steve, I'll let you go ahead. Steve, can you hear me? We lose you, Steve? Okay, while we're waiting for Steve, I saw Amy pointing to Nova and so.
Sorry, I was unclear on, uh, which entity in the borough ran an RFP for legal services. I don't, I don't know who does that.
It was done through the manager's office in the past.
Of course it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Steve, there you are.
Yep, um, did I hear correctly that the current contract runs out in the end of November?
Yes.
So I, my opinion is we kind of have to extend this for a year because even if we do issue an RFP, go through the process, we're not gonna have something settled between now and the end of November. So I think that this probably needs to go through and then also issue an RFP. But that date might be either a year from now or it could be to take on only new cases. Um, but I just don't see us in six weeks issuing an RFP and finding a new person. Thanks for your time.
Correct. Thank you, Steve. On there, so, uh, Bo?
Thank you. I, I would support, um, getting the RP process started sooner than later as well. And I appreciate the concern for, uh, having a sense of, of loyalty to our, our current attorney, however I view it another way in that this is competitive process. Um, to me, if that person wanted to earn the next contract performance based is how I look at it.
Any further questions? Jared?
Um, just a short little note, if we are gonna put an RFP together, can we have something in there about the, the winner of the contract can, uh, uh, write with less legalese? I think we, I feel like we, I feel like we spend so much time trying to interpret what our current lawyer writes. Um, and, um, uh, I, I don't know how to word, I don't know how to put, it's late, right? But that's one of my concerns.
If you don't know how to write it, I don't know who does.
I can figure it out. Chat GPT.
Thank you. With that, we'll, um, go ahead and move on to resolutions. Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash nine, ratifying and certifying the results of the October first, twenty twenty-four regular municipal election. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the assembly. The borough election on October one was executed seamlessly and I could not have done it without the help of the election workers, the receiving team, um, the canvas board workers. I hope I'm not forgetting anyone and also, of course, my team. I have a great team that I get to work with. So it's, it's been a fun process again. It's been very tiring, especially it's a three-year election this year. We have one big one coming up next month. Um, it's hard to get a breather at times, but, um, I am so proud of my team and we didn't have to do a recount this time. So I hope that you would adopt this resolution certifying the election, um, of October one. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinances for introduction. This is ordinance number FY twenty twenty-five dash eight, an ordinance of the Kodiak Island Borough accepting and appropriating grant funds for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one statewide salmon disaster. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The U.S. Secretary of Commerce declared a statewide salmon disaster for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fishery disaster that affected all species of salmon in certain areas of Alaska. Consequently, disaster funds were allocated to address losses to, to the affected salmon management areas. The Kodiak Island Borough has been notified of eligibility to receive twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars to compensate for lost income due to the effects of the fishery disaster that year. This ordinance is in accordance with Kodiak Island Borough Code three point two five point zero four zero dot C, which requires grant funds which are unlimited to use as, as to use or subject only to general limitations be appropriated by ordinance and, and include an appropriate budget amendment. So normally when we get grant funds in, we just accept them by resolution um, because they're usually for a specific purpose. Because this money is coming in without a specific destination, it requires an ordinance. And so that's what that code is. So you'll see in the introduction to ordinance that unless we name it going somewhere else, that money will just go into the general fund.
Okay, we have Ryan and then we have Bo.
So that is essentially, my question is, you know, we're, we're going to accept this money and I, I'm behind accepting it, but I think that it needs to have a destination. I, I don't think that we need to add twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars into the general fund and just have it sit there. So I, I, I would like to see it utilized somehow back into the salmon disaster. Um, I'm not familiar with how, uh, the fisheries was compensated. I don't know if this is a replacement for lost tax revenue, but I feel like we need to, I need to better understand this. And I would like to see if, if it's a grant, I'd like to see that it go back out for something. Thanks.
Bo and then Scott?
Thank you. So, um, this, so for, for, and Amy, at any point, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, our portion of it for the borough is, is to recover lost tax revenue. Um, but I'm, I'm with you in those, we've had some, some preliminary discussions on how to approach these funds as they come in. This won't be the, the last one, we'll have some crab funds coming at some point as well. Um, and my initial thoughts on it, which are, which will be up to the wishes of the assembly, um, would be to add these funds to, I don't know where you exactly placed, I believe it was twenty thousand for, for fishery support. Um, I don't know what that bucket is called.
We do have a line item for the fisheries work group.
Yep. So, um, my, my initial ta, take on, on these funds, which are specific to fisheries disasters, are to pool these funds and have them ready for any sort of grant opportunities that may come our way to support fisheries or fisheries infrastructure development and have in-kind funds ready to go for any grant opportunities. Because when those come around, we don't have a lot of time to apply for grants. We, we, we have a hard time even identifying them. We may have some support from one of our, um, folks in Congress, but we'll see how that works out. But, uh, that's my initial thoughts, is, is having that money available for any grant opportunities, which typically come with, uh, some level of in-kind contribution attached to them. Um, there's gonna be another joint fisheries work group meeting in the coming weeks, as I understand it, with the city. And, and this is something I would like to talk to our stakeholders about and say, hey, you know, we're starting to pool, it's not a lot of money, um, you know, in addition to what, um, what Amy set aside earlier in the fiscal year, but it's just gonna add up and it could be a substantial amount of money that we could leverage for infrastructure development, just as, as an example. But, um, that, that's my initial take on how we could handle these funds as they come in.
Just a quick comment before Scott. Part of where some of the disaster funds have been used before is fish culvert installations, too, which lends to infrastructure in that sense. So, that's always a potential for using for grant funding match on there, too. Scott?
Well, the other place I think could use the money is Kodiak Regional Aquaculture Association. They produce a huge amount of fish, and it's shared by everybody. I think that's a good place to put it, or to advise them that we have a grant maybe for them. Because I think they do a service for our community.
Any other? Jared?
I just wanna echo support for Beau's idea. Any way that we can get some little extra money and leverage it for more money is, is great. The other option is that we just add it to our FY 26 budget list of things not to forget, you know, as we, as we get into budget discussions in a few months. And just hold on to it then. And, but I really like, I really like Beau's idea. I think it's, I think that's the best way to spend the money now, if we decide to put it in something now.
Ryan?
Yeah, I'll echo the same support for Beau's idea. And I think having a destination or a plan for incoming funds is critical. And I, and again, avoidance into the general fund, in my opinion, I think is, is another critical component of incoming unanticipated funds. Thanks.
Okay. Jared?
One more quick thing. With 25, with 25 grand, we could probably also hire a really good grant writer to scope out one or two big grants and pay them to write some grants for us related to fisheries or infrastructure or anything.
Thanks. Any further discussion? Okay, that'll be on the agenda for next week. Other items are administration of oath of office to newly elected officials, and then presentations to outgoing Assembly members. And next item is manager's comments. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Arnt and I attended a presentation from Kodiak College staff on Monday. We learned about different programs, community education initiatives, and facility updates. And they fed us lunch. So, it was a wonderful meeting, and they have a very talented staff there. So, we thank them for that. I attended the debate and pre-debate social at Kodiak Hana for the fisheries. Assembly member Whiteside was there, and we were able to talk to Representative Petola about getting some help from one of her staff members in Sika, which was what he just referred to. So, good timing, sir. Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center. Today, this morning, I had a meeting with some of their executive level folks about regulations and regulatory issues that we're having, that they have kind of gigs on at the hospital that we're trying to get fixed before their limited time waiver is up. We are just about, we should be getting very soon the 65% drawings of the affected system, which is the HVAC system. So, the next time the ARB meets, we hope to have those ready to go for approval for them. I also had a meeting this morning with a local entity to discuss one of our exemption reconsiderations for tax year '24. We talked about some options moving forward, and we're gonna talk about that next week at the regular meeting in executive session. AML conference registration is open. The dates are there. And SEMA made a job officer, offer to an appraiser clerk this week, and they accepted. So, we're excited to have a new staff member coming on board. In community development, we're working on the comprehensive plan, and we're gonna be saying that for the next year. So, I hope you don't get too tired of it. We're trying to come up with new ways for people to participate. One of those ways is an online meeting in a box. If you want to participate in a survey that allows you to give your thoughts in for the future vision of the Kodiak Island Borough, you can go to our website and look at the community development page. It's, the link is listed in the manager's report, which the clerk puts online the next day after the meeting. Planning and zoning commission held a work session last night. The work session focused on a rewrite of Chapter 17, which is related to rezones and code amendments. A public hearing for this item will be held at next week's regular meeting. The commission also received training from American Planning Association on managing planning commission meetings and commission discussed issues with Title 17 related to definitions. What planning and zoning is doing right now is a complete rewrite of a chapter. And if you think that solid waste contract is confusing, this is, this is gonna be. So, we're asking them to kinda break that down and make that an easier process before it comes up to the Assembly, so it's not an entire chapter rewrite. We're learning. So...
Thank you for that.
Yes, absolutely. Parks and Rec Committee met on the 8th. The committee completed its discussion of a Parks and Rec survey. Once the survey is ready to go, it'll be on the website, and we will advertise that. That Parks and Rec survey hasn't been done for a very long time, so they're trying to get public input on what the community wants to see for the borough parks and rec facilities. That new park is open out in Sergeant Creek behind the Women's Bay Fire Station, getting a lot of use. So, we're excited to have that done. And we're still hiring for that associate planner. We have it advertised all over the place. We haven't, we did have one student who graduates at the end of this upcoming semester show interest. So, we are, that whole handshake program we signed up for is working out well for us. In assessing their finishing up their inspections in Manoshka Bell's flats, Chinnyak, and Sagshack, they've seen 931 properties so far this year. For senior citizen and disabled veterans exemptions, we are down to four applicants that we're trying to figure out. The assessor will be traveling to the villages. Her travel schedule is listed there. If you're interested in coming along, please let SEMA know. For exemptions, one new exemption application was processed and sent out today. They'll have 30 days to appeal if they don't agree. We do have one applicant in the middle of a reconsideration that they have until the 24th to respond. And then on the 12th, our final reconsideration. They have the choice to either ask the Assembly. If they don't agree, they have the chance to ask the Assembly to act as the Board of Legalization or take it to Superior Court. And that's this weekend. So, I think we're actually, that's who I met with today. We should hear a decision from them tomorrow. In engineering facilities, we're still working on that lift station. Due to concerns regarding hazardous materials such as asbestos, we conducted sampling in the area, thanks to MWFF for coming out. They also encapsulated the crawl space adjacent to the sewage lift station yesterday. And that makes everyone feel a lot better about being down in that space because as soon as you get there, there's asbestos stickers everywhere. We're working with our architect and engineering firms to resize the pumps. The original pumps in this building were for the, when it was a dormitory. So, on the borough side of the building, that was the girls' wing. The city side of the building, that was the boys' wing. And so, our conference room on that first floor had six toilets and four showers in that space. And so, and people living here. And so, the pumps that are in there are not what we need today. So, we have found smaller pumps. We are working with local contractors to confirm their suitability for installation, which was done today. And once those pumps are verified by the contractors and the building code official, we're gonna order them and schedule them for replacement. We don't have any changes in the boiler installation project. I couldn't get them to help me at my house either. So, we'll... At KFRC, we have our fall carpet cleaning this weekend. We made great progress. Thank you to Assembly member Ames for putting off his trip to Old Harbor for one day. He came in and helped us with the electrical issues that we were having. We have new bases, pipe guides, and pumps are all installed. They are operating, but only if we do it manually. So, we're trying to figure out what the control issue is, or if it's a possible float issue. We had problems with the seawater pump number four, so we had a representative come to the site and teach staff how to install a new motor. Those are the pumps that provide the seawater for the labs for our tenants. And we sourced radon tests, and we installed them around the lower level of the KFRC. These tests will be collected in a few weeks and shipped back to the lab to see if we have any issues in that building. At the landfill, the Baylor building concrete floor contract schedules are set. We had some problems acquiring the fly ash mix, but it has been found. We anticipate a late October timeline due to the testing of that mixed design, but it is gonna overlap with the Baylor shutdown. So, we won't have to have the Baylor shut down any longer because the Baylor shut down on September 25th, and we are expecting eight weeks for that rebuild to be done. The staff is working with the Denali Commission on that solid waste managed planning grant. We're splitting a $500,000 grant for them for a region-wide solid waste plan. And we have been informed that there's been an increase in bear activity as the fish stop swimming, the bears start looking for trash. So, if you're using our well of containers, please close the doors when you're done putting your trash in there, so we don't, we're not feeding the bears. At the leachate treatment plant, and this is something that's very exciting because we've been waiting for a long time. The contractor is scheduled to be in town October 21st. We're gonna switch out our pumps finally. And we have some other things that are gonna be working on there, too, but we've been waiting for those new pumps so we can reach that 200 gallons a minute for quite a while. Out at Peterson, we have an expected arrival of additional materials we've been waiting for. They're supposed to get here tomorrow. We were originally anticipated to have our Johns Manville inspector be here on October 14th. However, that inspector departed rather abruptly. The next time we can get a different inspector up here is October 21st. We did a no con, no cost contract extension of five days. The new final completion date for the project will be October 25th. We have two RFPs out right now. We have one for Bayview and Manoshka Bay service areas and the other for KIB facilities. The hospital yesterday was performing an annual fire alarm test with Taylor Fire, the test for the air handler one unit to close the dampers and shut down the motor. But during the test, the dampers closed, but the motor did not shut down, causing the air chamber to become pressurized and caused the wall panels to blow out. Staff called and told us about it, how they were gonna fix it. They completed the repairs, retested the system, and everything went well. They believe that it was a variable frequency drive that failed to shut down. They're gonna test the relay, and the fan shut down, and research a way to figure out which one of those failed. So, I think they have it handled, and it, the report that came to us sounded very dramatic. And by the time we got over there, they already had it fixed. So, thanks to staff over there. In finance, next week is a really big week. It is the deadline for full payments. If you didn't make your first half payment by August 15th, your deadline is Tuesday, October 15th. There's a 10% penalty for paying on or after October 16th. For those that made a timely first half payment by August 15th, your second half payment is due on or before November 15th. In information technology, in the security audit, they're in their fieldwork phase. We have connected our consultants to our network, and they're currently scanning our networks and systems, looking for areas that we can improve our security. We only have eight users left to have full two-factor authentication in our Microsoft 365 environment. We have three Assembly member laptops, if you want them. Oh, yay, two Assembly member laptops. Thank you. IT has been working with engineering facilities at the leachate treatment plant to upgrade their PC equipment. They've also been walking around putting asset tags on all of our IT assets because that's something that hasn't been done in quite a while. And they're doing a lot of software work inside of our leisure fish program. And our GIS analyst has moved on to the next village. They're working with assessing on verifying addresses in Carluck. That's something that doesn't get done very often, so we're going village by village to verify addresses. And then I added our 2021, you can't see it, but you'll see it next week, salmon disaster funds to our reminders for budget discussions if we don't do an amendment before then. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Questions, Ryan?
So, the snow removal and ice control for Manoshka, Bay, let's see, Bayview and Manoshka, as well as the facilities, were those put out to solicitation with the understanding that prevailing wages was going to be paid?
Yes.
Okay. So, definitely still looking for that legal opinion from Scott Brand Erickson that is in direct conflict with now three administrative law judges. The next thing is, you've mentioned radon tests were being taken at the KFRC building for weeks. I just wanna make sure that, that those are being ran accordingly. A radon test is only to be ran for a 24-hour period. They're a puck, and then the turn on them is only three or four days. So, I just wanna make sure that...
I'll have to follow up on that. I don't, I'm not sure when those were.
Okay. And then the last thing, the last time we discussed, and it's not on your update, but I just wanna make sure that we close the loop. The last time we discussed the mental health buildings, I felt that there might not have been explicit direction to winterize those buildings. And so, I wanna make sure that the buildings are indeed on schedule to be winterized.
I think that they are already winterized. I will follow up on that.
Thanks. Let's all have, thanks.
Anyone else have any questions on there? Seeing none, we'll move on to clerk's comments. Nova?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly. So, once you certify the election next week, we have 10 days for elect, that's the election contest period. So, we're, we can really say that we're over with the local election on October 28th. My office, we can then breathe a sigh of relief on October 28th. So, after each election, we have pages and pages of things to do. Maybe ordering new business cards, following up on APOC forms for those who are exiting from their offices, and just tons of follow-up things to do. Updating our initiative and referendum, updating our website, rosters, thank you letters to those who have served and re-elected, and things like that. So, after the election contest period, we also send all our election materials to the state so that they can update their voter registry. For those who have voted question ballots, their voter information will also be updated. So, the general election will be held on Tuesday, November 5. For those who are leaving town, absentee voting will start at 10:00 a.m. on Monday, October 14, here in the Assembly chambers. We've been getting a lot of traffic here in the office, people wondering when that's going to start. It's going to start on October 14, or no, October...
I thought it was the 21st.
I'm looking, 21st, I meant.
It says...
October 21st. And I have been posting a lot of social media, on social media, a lot about elections. So, hopefully, I can reach out people that way, too. So, October 21st, 10:00 a.m., here in the Assembly chambers. One of my staff members will be attending an ARMA records management conference next week. I'm not gonna keep giving you an update here. I'll just pass on my report. I know everyone's tired. It's been a long night. One thing that I would like to point out, though, is that I've emailed you the appointment of Assembly representatives to boards and commissions form. So, if you can fill this out and return it to me by next week, that would be great. If you wish to travel to AML this December, please let me know. And I'm going to be putting together a training for our boards and committees sometime next month. And then hopefully sometime in December, too, we could invite our attorney, if he's coming to Kodiak, or if there's other things that he's, you know, that he's gonna be doing here in Kodiak, then maybe we could also arrange boardmanship training, our Open Meetings Act, and ethics and stuff like that for our boards and committees. That's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Seeing none, move on to Assembly member comments. Jared, I'll start with you.
Gosh, I don't think I've ever gone first before. Nothing further for me. Thank you.
Took a while to get there. Beau? Bo?
I just wanted to put a quick thanks out for Kodiak Chamber of Commerce and KMXT for hosting the Congressional Fisheries Debate and facilitating access for the community and those of us on the Assembly and City Council to, to meet with the candidates. I, I was fortunate to have quite a bit of time with all three and ask a lot of questions that have come to us through our joint Fisheries Work Group meetings. And so I think we, we have some options we can discuss with our public and stakeholders on, on just ways we can move forward and, and become a more resilient fishing community. And then just a gentle reminder that we're all here because of fisheries. Every business, every, every entity on this island all surrounds fisheries. So that's, it's always a sobering reminder that when fisheries are struggling, it hurts everybody. So we're, we're listening, and we're hoping we can help soon.
Thank you. Scott?
No comment.
Ryan?
No comment. Thank you.
Steve, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'd just like to thank everyone in the different departments of the boroughs, put a lot of time and effort into the discussions we've had tonight. I know it's taken a lot of their time, also going even back to the maritime. The staff of the boroughs put a lot of time into that, and I'd like to thank them, and making it possible for me to join by Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mayor's comments, I don't have any further comments at this time. So work session is adjourned at, what do we have, 9:41. Thank you. Good night.
Bye, Steve.
When is the agenda setting? Is it in the queue?
Yes, at 9:00 a.m. I have a question about that with the mayor, because there's an AML meeting that morning, but it's the Resolutions Committee, so.